We are recording.
All right, welcome to the Webster Select Board meeting, March 7th, 6:34, couple minutes late as everybody was getting down here to the conference room. As the elections are set up for upstairs, which will be happening tomorrow. We will go ahead and get ourselves going in the normal manner with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I was gonna say, aren't we?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to say amen.
All right.
I don't know why.
Continuing on with our roll call, Dave Hemmway, Chair of Select Board.
Marlo Herrick.
Normandy Blake.
And so that takes care of that. For announcements, my quick announcement is of course, come out and vote tomorrow. We have, of course, the town offices, which I don't think anybody is running opposed. However, the important note is that the wetlands and watershed protection ordinance is on the ballot. Some people have continued to be incorrect in thinking that that would be debated at town meeting, and it will not. Town meeting is only to announce the results of how that is on the vote on the ballot. So come out and vote tomorrow on Tuesday, and then come out and listen to how that went and debate the rest of the stuff at town meeting on Saturday.
Can I add something?
Please.
And there is a sample ballot on the website, which I think is important to read, so you know, as sometimes when I vote, I get behind the closed curtain and it can be a little bit more intimidating than if you are prepared for what you're looking at.
Yeah, and full copies of the wetlands and watershed information, the background to it, and the full copy of the text of that proposed ordinance are all available on the front page of our website. Do we have any further announcements?
I do not.
All right.
Well, I could say one thing.
Go for it.
The school board, the annual meeting went the other day and it went well, very well, and a lot of people spoke, and I was very proud of the whole thing.
Yeah, it went quite well. I apologize for looking down here and trying to bring up the agenda, so I can actually follow it correctly. But let's go ahead and, oh, perfect, move right on to appointments that the department has.
Go ahead, Jake.
You've got it. So, budget, as of March 3rd, we've used $42,991 towards our 22 budget. And hopefully everything will go smoothly on Saturday, so we will have a budget. From February 1st to the 28th, we had 70 motor vehicle stops, four summonses with fines of $620, five arrests, six charges, as well as one involuntary emergency administration and IEA into New Hampshire State Hospital. Officers responded to 60 calls for service, which are usually the typical ones, civil complaints, department information, domestic violence petitions served, motor vehicle complaints, motor vehicle accidents, pistol permits, residential burglary alarms, sex offender registration, suspicious persons, welfare checks, assist the citizens, assist the fire department, EMS, assist to other agencies, animal complaints, and police information requests. Training, I got recertified as a firearms instructor at the academy two weeks ago. And just looking forward to town meeting, and if the board hits any special requests, please let me know. But I do have one other thing that I'd like to bring up since I were talking about the police department. We signed a contract with the state for fuel, which was a great thing because we got our fuel for $1.90, which was supposed to be good until September, until we got a notification from the state today that said they're no longer going to abide by that.
So they didn't lock in?
Oh, it locked it in at $1.90 till September, and then they sent us a notification today saying, yeah, we're going to renegotiate on the agreement and we're not going to abide by the $1.90.
So who do they use as a supplier then?
Oh, we're going to still get it from the state.
No, 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 but I meant, I meant because the way I understand locking in is you're locked in for the futures that you buy until that date.
Until September.
Yeah.
Of 2022.
Yeah.
Well, the state of New Hampshire decides, no, they're not going to do that.
Is that legal?
Would have to take them to court to make it, to do anything.
I would assume it, I don't know who they use for the actual fuel, who they locked in with, let me put it that way.
Well, I don't know who they use.
What company? Because that would be important to find out, because I'm assuming, which is a bad word and I won't say it on, my mom always calls it. But when they locked in, they knew about how much fuel everybody was going to use, those futures should have already, they were already pre-bought. I don't understand, it must be the supplier, who is the supplier and what is their liability?
Yeah.
That they, unless there's something missing in this little contract we all don't know about, which could be happening.
I agree, this we don't know and I won't know until I get all the specifics. They just showed us an email saying that now they're going to, the price is going to be dictated per load. So when a load is delivered, where we usually get our fuel, which is Hockington, the price will be determined by what they pay for the load of fuel at that time. And that price will be good for 30 days, could be up to 60 days. So I won't know until I get something from them in writing to say exactly what the specifics are and what the fuel prices are going to be.
Yeah. And you know what made me, I saw something on the news tonight that New Hampshire has no law about companies gouging other people.
I saw that too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking, that's, how come we don't, we got all these stupid laws for stupid things and then it's something like that could mess everybody up.
There again, the port is really, I don't, I honestly don't think your big, well, it's beyond the port, big companies. And I don't even know how that all works, it's always been such a mystery to me on, you know, Mobil and Exxon and Shell, or I mean, I don't want to say one company, but where their profits come from.
Right.
Because for the most part, there's a lot of fuel that runs through the whole country and for the, you know, they can, you can see the future. And so all of a sudden, you know, why do they look like they're making all this money? I've never ever understood that.
So all the fuel that they have in reserves, like in Boston?
Yeah.
That's all been bought and paid for.
Right.
So why is that now $4.50 a gallon?
Yeah.
So that, as far as I'm concerned, is price gouging.
That could be, that could be. But who's really, who's doing the gouging? That's would be interesting to know.
The other thing that I understand is that the taxpayers give oil companies money, I mean, in a roundabout way. So why are we doing that? I mean, you know, that's, come on, they're making all kinds of money, those, their CEOs are making a few bucks, I'd say, a few million.
So the minute I find out from the state in writing on what's going on.
And I think it's important to know who the supplier is, because that seems weird.
Because this is for the whole state of New Hampshire.
Right.
And there's an awful lot, well, all of DOT, that's fuel, oil, as well as gasoline.
Interesting.
There's no service, or I'd make a phone call and somebody would tell me who delivers the fuel there, but it can't make sense.
It would definitely be interesting, because there, I mean, there are some reasons that could have made it
Right.
not possible for them to get fuel anymore right now.
Yeah, maybe something blew up or.
Well, there's also specific companies that no longer are allowed to do business in different places. So we'll have to see, I look forward to seeing what they say.
I will keep the board, you know, up to date on everything the minute I hear.
Thank you. We can stop our feet.
Because I thought we were, I thought we were going to be really good at $1.90, I'm going, this is.
$1.90, oh my god, tell me, yeah.
Yeah, we were so proud of you.
Now it's going, now it's going.
Go out that door, come back.
Now we're very disappointed.
So I guess I'm going to have to make up the difference, right?
But it's too bad we don't know what we can do, maybe, you know, every town's going to have the same problem, so.
Every town and all the DOT, yeah, the complete state.
Yeah, maybe we should all try to get together.
Where's dumb you on me war when you need them?
The, so the thing to think about here with this is, of course, we don't know what the state's going to have for pricing now, because we don't have a lock-in, which means it make it a challenge for us to actually budget for. However, I would like you to try and get from them what they expect at least the most recent upcoming prices will be, and then provide us a figure, suggest an amendment to the budget at town meeting if we need it.
So my concern, do you really want to add that to that? Is there a chance that we can use our money for that? That's an unexpected turn created by the state.
Right, and it's not just the police cruisers, it's the fire trucks.
Right, it's fire trucks, it's everything.
Yeah, but I think that's a, that's a normal operating thing, so we should try to budget for it.
And that is, that is a normal operating thing, but unexpected operating thing because of the crisis.
But I think that's why we should try to budget for it, and then at least we'll be closer to it, instead of just, well, we won't do anything and then we'll sticker shop everybody later.
Because we cut $1,000 off the gas line because of, we were going to get it for $1.90 a gallon.
Because Dana find out about the ARPU funds if that's going to be.
I just hate to add $1,000 bucks to my budget now.
When you, when you talk to them or email them back and forth, will you enosh- enoshigate the diesel fuel price as well?
I'll ask them, because.
Pass that on?
Because do you have, do you have some locked-in numbers for, no, not from the roadside, because that, that wouldn't even be another whole situation.
No, that's a whole different situation.
Fire trucks.
For the fire trucks, so. But then that will give us some idea if it's going up a buck a gallon, not that we use a whole lot, but it will affect us at the end.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I think that's going to be the way to, to deal with that for budgeting. Because even if we're not spot on, as long as we get closer, that's going to be, I think, important to make sure that we have things appropriate.
I'm sorry, do we have any capital reserve fund to cover that at all if we needed to?
Not for fuel.
Not for, not for fuel.
Yeah, we have like vehicle maintenance and stuff, but not fuel. Anything else on this topic?
No.
Okay. So before I go ahead and jump over to the other department heads, I forgot two things that I wanted to announce. One, of course, is this wonderful book, The Town Report, it is complete. Thank you very much to these gentlemen over here for making it happen.
Very nice.
You can also find a full copy of it on the website in nice PDF searchable format, so it's actually easier to use there if you're familiar with technology. And the second part of that, which was briefly brought up before the meeting, which is why I didn't remember it during announcements, is the road weight limits have been posted because we are entering thaw and mud season, so please be aware of that. If you have large deliveries, et cetera, they need to get approval and/or find different routes because of that. So let's go ahead and move along to the rest of the departments.
No, I didn't know if you, I didn't want if you needed to get going. All right, I guess we'll start with the highway, I mean, we've had a few scuttled storms there last week. It was one of them deals damned if you do and damned if you don't, but I guess nobody got hurt or accidents or anything, so I guess we did the right thing. Close Pin Bridge is an issue, that lower end on the concrete, all went along on one side, it's been right down to rebar, and then now on, going down on the other side, the other wheel track, the cement is all gone down through and there's rebar and somebody's going to get hurt if they're walking or whatever, so the I-beams are still in place, but the cement between the I-beams is corroding fast and falling in, so that needs to be plated and tarred over, and that's not going to happen this time of year, because it's just with everything.
Yeah, more ice, that's all we need, a little more ice to freeze it.
On, on the bridge there, so you want to put a load of gravel on each side of the bridge and put some signs up, because if the right-sized truck comes along and not straddle in the I-beams and tractor trailer, I followed a tractor trailer, crossed it today, stopped them down to Roy Fang Joyce, and he didn't see, I just got done putting the six-ton sign up at the corner and, of course, he didn't see any of it.
Yeah, but gravel, wouldn't that just go in the river? How do you keep the gravel?
No, I can't now, because it froze in the winter and I had the hole spilled with stuff, but now.
Yeah, just go in the river, so that's kind of silly.
So now what we need to do is it's got to be plated, and then it's got to be tarred over the plate, so.
Okay, but you said you can't do that now.
Right, no, because of.
Everything.
Yeah, to get the plates into place and as much as I hate to, but it is quite a liability for the town, somebody walks across that in the middle of the night, ends up with a broken leg or gets caught down in there, and I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's bad. I have pictures.
No, no, I do too.
I took them with my foot next to it and all, and holy crow, this is big.
I'm going to.
And like I said, I saw three people, I was taking a picture of the bridge, three people stopped and they all mentioned the bridge and stuff. I said, we're going to do something, we got to do something, we'll do it, you know, so I said, we're going to talk about it tonight, so.
So.
Let's return back to that, because we do need to talk about it, but let's let him finish the rest of this report.
Okay. Highway, Corn Hill, at the intersection of Centennial Drive, the town, we own that little structure that's there in the corner now. They took it for taxes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I would really love permission from the select board, when you pull out of Centennial Drive and you look back up Corn Hill Road, there's a row of pines to cut them, get them out of there, to open up that line of sight. If we do it now, while we own the land, we don't have to, we can just do it. We sell the piece for whatevers, and we might not be able to do it and do it the way it should be done.
What would be the cost of taking the pines down?
A couple days' work, because it's the way.
Oh, and you would, you would do it and be part of, the cost would be what, you and your labor?
Yeah.
Do you have like an estimate of what you'd think that would be? That's rough.
Probably about a third of what it would cost if you had a tree company come in.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Two days, I don't know, probably about five grand. Because what I would do is I'd take the excavator down to push them and all in the right direction, but no, but there's wires, but.
Plenty of traffic?
Well, no, we'd just shut the road, we'd just detour the road, right?
Yeah, go around, right.
Detour it around, close it down for like four hours one day, and then four hours, you know, and crush the brush up and put it in the dump truck and I mean, that's, that's going to be our biggest expenses hauling the stuff over to Chucky's.
And we have had a couple wrecks there through the years.
Yeah.
You can't see.
You can't see, I agree, 100%.
When you're trying to make that turn.
Either turn there, and Centennial gets a lot of traffic, you've got all them houses on Romford and they're coming across.
Yeah.
And I notice it a lot, because when you're in the plow truck, that plow sticks out 12 feet in front of the windshield and you're way back here and you're trying to see up through and so I'd like to open that corner up and spend two, three days down there working and.
Roughly how many trees are we talking? I'm picturing the spot, but.
Oh, I don't know, there must be a row of 12 up through there on this side, eight or 12, I mean, without, I didn't count them one right after another, but.
Okay.
Are they all on that property, Emmett?
Yeah.
Well, some of them are now right away, within 10 feet inside, but some of them aren't, and then you, the power line, the road goes up through and you've got these row of pines, and the power lines are actually in behind. And then there's a one that comes across to feed that other house that's right across from Centennial. I was just thinking, I know it's a small lot, I mean, it's not much to it, yeah. Yeah. So that's a little project, while we own that structure or that property, I, now would be the time to do, I mean, before we sell it.
Yeah, that's a good idea, because it is blind there, that's.
And the traffic's only getting busier every day, every year, and then just think if we opened that up, we could get that ditched out. There's a culvert pipe right there that the water comes out into the road and then goes in, them stumps were gone, I mean, it could clean that corner up nice, but
It's worth it.
Three, four days' work down there.
All right, sorry.
I'm still not sure about that.
Hey, she's not sure about that, I don't know what to do.
Thanks, Jerry.
Oh, that was funny, yeah.
Russell said that he's been trying to work with the people from the state on a, on a test pit some down on Dustin Road, but.
They haven't responded to me. They didn't respond to me last time either.
So, I know.
What's the state, what's, remind me, what's the state?
Well, when you, when you dig and dredge, you have to notify, when you're opening up a pit.
Yeah.
You have to notify the state, I know towns and states are exempt from a bunch of that stuff.
Okay, okay.
But where, dealing with everybody in the constipation, we're concerned about the river, I just wanted to go about it correct.
Oh, sure.
And do things right, so I wasn't getting myself into trouble or, or doing anything wrong to come back onto the town.
So who at the state are we, are we trying to reach?
Just trying to contact DES.
Oh, okay.
They're so busy.
I might try to give Tyler a direct call and see if he can get me to the right person, because he's our wetland specialist.
Yeah.
And maybe he can help me get to the right spot.
Yeah, he was at the snowmobile, we had a snowmobile go through the ice in Pillsbury Lake, and we notified DES to come out to make sure that everything was fine to cover our.
Yeah.
Phil and Steve were involved, Fish and Game were involved, but, so back onto the highway, I sent one of my trucks down to, I did get the price sheet from Culvert Gravel, I took pictures of it, and I think Dana put it in my folder, but Friday my phone all went berserk and I ended up having to get a new phone and I lost a bunch of stuff. So, but when Russell came back from hauling the other day, he said it's gone up. Steve told him down there, $3 a ton across the board, so we haul 20 tons per load, so that's six, that's going to add $60 a load, per load. The cost of the material has gone up.
And that's for gravel?
Gravel, stone, rock, stone dust.
I know you tend to collect stuff and then we eventually rent something, rent a machine and do our own breakup. When's the last time we did that?
We didn't do it last summer, we did it the summer before.
Okay.
But, and then I don't know if I'll have enough material to do it this summer or the following summer, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Because we have to, before, I have Hanaka Crush Stone come in and crush that, and it's a minimum of 3,000 yards.
Yeah, that makes sense.
To do that, but I'm working on a couple other options. So other than, I do have some major potholes on some of the tarred roads, but they have to be dry when you do that, and do have some material at the greenhouse to fill that in, and it's not all, because it goes bad over the winter sitting, the oil, how it all works, but hopefully they'll have some that hooks it down to Pike. I'll send a truck down, so as soon as the potholes dry out and we can, because if you fill them when they're full of water, the next, they just part right back out and it's a waste of money and time. So any other questions on the highway?
You know me.
I'd point out that the culvert on Close Pin Bridge Road down near my place.
Yeah.
Also has an issue near the edge.
Mr. Jettie left us a message the other day, and I stopped and met with Mr. Jettie two Saturdays, not last Saturday, the Saturday before. There is a hole on the lower end where the header, header is, and where the water pond up there, it went down in behind the rock instead of over the rock. There's no structural damage there, it's just, it's just.
Just another thing.
The earth opened up and let it go, but Mr. Jettie did call and I did go see him and we went over everything, so.
All right, anything else?
Well, so what do we need to, do we, do you need to decide on the whole cutting of the pine trees?
We probably should make it an obvious direction, so what do you think?
Well, I don't know if we have to, well, I guess, I guess probably.
It doesn't need to be really a motion.
No, it's just, it's something that, it's something that would be great to do, and while we own the, while we own the land, it's the right time to do it, but I just wanted to get your blessing and let you know that it was a good project to do now instead of we sell the place and it will never get done. I don't, I mean, you folks can do whatevers you want.
Okay, I see, I see, you're just letting us know, it's not like we have to say.
Well, you could say no, just leave it alone, because we want to sell it the way it is, I'm asking for your blessing to, to cut the trees.
Right.
We have the money in road preservation.
Gotcha, gotcha, sorry, I just didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, no, now you do, and we all, we're all on the same page, but sometimes I just like to share.
Oh, that's good.
Things that I'm going to do, instead of all of a sudden, one of you folks drive through and see a major project and the road's closed and what's going on, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Well, do what you got to do.
So before we sell the place, if I don't get that done, because the roads are posted, and when the roads are posted, I try not to take advantage of working on the roads, because no one else can travel the roads, so it will be after.
Or when the weather allows you to.
Yeah.
Because I think you would do for whoever needs to work on the roads.
Is that one we've had for a while, or was that one that was in the last round?
It's in the last one, it's fairly recent.
Okay.
Yeah, it was like in the last year.
But it is better to get it done a week on it, because somebody could buy it, and then, don't touch my tree, I mean, I love trees too.
No, me too, and that, but.
But right, but I know you're talking, it's dangerous doing that.
I talked to Phil and Steve about, you know, about, and they thought it was a good idea.
Absolutely.
No, because once a month I check all your roads, no matter if I wanted or not when I'm delivering papers.
We're going to get a D report.
But he's done good, he's done well, I can, I'm not complaining.
I traveled all, I mean, when I post the roads, like I did today, Province Road and Beaver Dam haven't got a sign yet because it started to really rain, and I said, well, it's fine. I drive all the roads to see what's going on, I mean, I went all the way out to Pond Hill, up to Mr. Buckley's and turned around just to make sure there's no construction or somebody's building a house or something, so they are building a house down on Manchester Drive. Out at the end, and I walked up and just said, hey, gentlemen, it's Andy, Andy's the man that owns the place Nukem. I said, is Andy around? And they said, no, and I said, well, you guys, who's the boss here? And they said, well, they all pointed to each other. I said, well, I just posted the road and just wanted you guys to know that it's posted, so if you just called for a truck, it's, you know, just so, no surprises, and that's take a ride around, see what's going on, and I think that's just about the only construction that's going on in town on our roads, other than some state roads, but.
Yeah. And it's still, is it that the, if you want an oil delivery, do they still have to get?
No, the oil, they.
They're exempt.
No, they don't.
Oh, I thought they were exempt.
No, no. The only people that are exempt is fire trucks, school buses. School buses aren't even exempt.
I didn't learn something new.
I thought we stuck here.
No. No, if you, if the road gets muddy and you tell them to lug that oil up there in five gallon buckets, that's.
We're not gonna do that, though.
I'm not paying for him.
Right?
Hell, I have.
Those days are gone.
Didn't overwhelm.
No, I said it did. We'll figure it out.
My friend Dawn, her older class, she wasn't real happy with me.
Wow.
Um, so on to the fire, we're forty calls, maybe forty-one, because we get toned out to go to, um, Oscar the other night for a reported building fire, but it ended up, thank golly, somebody was burning brush behind the house. Um, we did go to Bradford, we sent one tanker to Bradford the other day to their, um, fifth alarm fire. Um, so, so far this month, I think we went like eleven days without a call, which was fantastic. Um, so, this Wednesday night for training, um, we're gonna do cold water rescue, um, Salisbury, we're gonna start back working with them, um, combined trainings.
Oh, that's good.
And, um, they're coming down, and we're gonna go over all their gear within their truck and what we have, and then, um, pretty sure, they haven't sent the announcement out, but I'm pretty sure it's Sunday morning. Um, then we're gonna go out on the ice and do some, some training, um, with our suits and the sleds and, um, cold water stuff that we have. Um, so that's training, the morale at the fire station has been great. Other than just everyday business, it's.
Good.
Um, trying to think, um, we are, I have been with the CIP, with the ambulance, looking at a used ambulance, um, within the next year, um, so when we go that route, we're gonna lose our cascade system that we have and the ambulance we have now, because that truck is big enough to carry it. Um, there's four bottles, oxygen bottles, and a container, um, a box that you put that in and fill it all up, so if it blows up, nobody gets hurt, it's a lock container. Um, so, um, one of the Lieutenant Lorden has been, um, pricing some trailers, um, seven by twelves, dual axle, to put that in. Because once we lose that, not that we use it every day, but once we take that out of there and do away with it, we'll probably never have it back. And we have the refilling station, did you get that, did that come with a grant?
It was a grant.
When, that's the pack, back.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so we have the refilling station to fill our, um, breathing apparatus bottles and to fill the, the cascade system, and I just feel that it would be to the towns and the surrounding towns around us benefit to keep that up and going. So, um, the trailers that they've been looking at, um, between seven and eight grand.
Does it make sense to go for a trailer instead of a new, instead of the ambulance that you're looking at being able to fit it in the replacement?
There's no way, no, 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 this, this ambulance that we have is, is big, and it was, it was bought for that, but any, any ambulance that you, uh, an ambulance ambulance isn't going to, um, have the space to, to carry this, um, it takes up some room. I mean, that compartment must, am I going too wide or?
No, it's a good size, I mean, this was set up as a rescue ambulance, and that's why it had, you know, generator, lighting.
In eight feet wide.
The air pack refilling station, so it had ropes and rescue equipment on it, it was dual purpose, and then, of course, the transporting capability, which is where, it's where you can go when you need it, and we, and they've used it several times, we've used it several times through the years.
Yeah, we, yeah, we took Jordan a lot, and, so, that trailer with the cascade in it, in the winter, we'll have the cold water rescue gear in it, that won't be, because there won't be room on the other ambulance that we're getting to do that, so it will be an all, well, I don't want to say, well, an all-purpose.
Rescue vehicle, a rescue trailer.
Whatever, and then we can hook it onto the forestry truck, or pickup truck, and get where you need to go. And a lot of the other towns have gone with the trailers, um, New London and, um, a couple of the other towns.
Just think of it this way, just to help you, Odam, if you put that weight on an ambulance, you're beating the hell out of that piece of apparatus all the time, especially the way the roads are, you know, frosty and stuff, versus sitting in a trailer that a couple of times a year you need it, you're not beating on the equipment, so it really, it makes sense to take, you're talking probably four or five thousand pounds.
Yeah, 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 well, you take, yeah, then bottle for five hundred, yeah.
Good amount of weight, and that's why that's such a, that's a class one ambulance to be able to do that.
Yeah, because that, that ambulance we have is a big, that's a big, that's a big, big, um, bigger than most ambulances that you see.
Now, when, when you look at the replacement ambulance, are you expecting to immediately take this ambulance out of service, or are you expecting to drive this one into the ground while you're able to also use the other one?
Well, I haven't got that far yet, but I don't, of my, um, and you could leave that on that, but then it's another vehicle to maintain and to insure, and then you gotta have a roof to put it under, and, once that new tanker comes, that's gonna take up a lot of real estate in that building.
That makes sense.
So, I'm not one to get rid of things, I just put them out back and go get parts off in them when I need them, but in this case, I think it, I think it's the right thing to do, we, um, get that, if everything works with the deal that I'm, that's in the workings, it's gonna be great, and if it doesn't, then we'll find, we'll find another deal.
Sweet. So more or less, just, you're gonna, you're not gonna, you're gonna try to trade and trade out.
Oh, we won't, this ambulance that, no, because the ambulance that I'm looking at
Yeah.
is one that another department has, they, they run them for two years, and then it goes into a backup ambulance for a year.
Yeah.
And then it's gone.
Oh, okay.
So, um.
And how many years have we in our ambulance?
That's a ninety-seven?
Ninety-six or ninety-seven.
Yeah, ninety-seven.
Young, huh?
And we did, we did, when Rob, when Rob was there, we did send it out to Bill Tracy in thirty-something thousand dollars, but that was almost eight years ago now.
Wow.
I mean, we got you, so.
Oh.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you did, you really did.
And, I jump into it today, right now, and go anywhere you needed to go, but it's just, I need, I shouldn't say I, we need something a little more friendlier, easier, and, um, a little bit updated.
Yeah, oh, I understand that, I just, I couldn't, I didn't realize how old that other ambulance is, it's pretty old.
Well, yeah, but you walk by it, and you think it was brand new.
Yeah, well, it doesn't go out that much, thank God, we don't, it doesn't go out that much.
Would we expect to actually get anything for it, or what happens to?
I guess that's what I was thinking.
Well, you can take it down to the White Farm, and, or you could put it out to bid, somebody might, it would make somebody a heck of a tool truck, it's got a nice little Cummins engine with hardly any miles on it, I mean, it would make somebody a heck of a service truck, but, um, to bring big money, I mean.
So what, I guess, maybe I was, I missed something, so what were you saying by you weren't gonna, you weren't gonna steal parts off it, you said?
No, 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 I said, I'm the type of guy that talks things out back and then go steal parts off it, meaning like my plow trucks and different things, but.
You don't want to do that when you're in an ambulance.
Well, and there's nothing, right, and there's nothing that you can use off in that for the new one or anything that we have anyway.
Right, right, so it should find a home, and then send out back, okay, so that's why, all right, good.
Yeah, sometimes.
Did I miss something? Did I space out, missed what you were saying?
Well, sometimes I don't communicate, just, I don't.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, I just.
Explain myself, or, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
But, um, sometimes you just need to, um, get rid of stuff.
Yes, you do, yes, I agree, yes, they all go through that, I get it, I get it, yeah, so, I just didn't know what you thought, where you were going to, so now you just said maybe put it on, like you said, that, or, I mean, I don't know why, I think maybe racetracks might, might, you know, if they have their own ambulance, that they sit in the track, you know what I mean, that?
Uh, usually the racetracks, um, they hire that all out to a private, or, uh, like, down at Lee, they'll hire the surrounding towns to come in, or a private ambulance service, a lot of them, but, I mean, it would make somebody a heck of a tool truck, a service truck, or, um.
Like down at the dragway, that's their own, they, they have a service that comes and does it.
Right, right, I, I, my boy's just a dirt bike racer, that's what I was thinking about right now, but I knew some were hired on, and some, some they did.
Yeah.
You know, they hired on the EMTs people.
Um. Parking lot at the fire station, I'm meeting with Warren Kobe, he is the owner of GMI this week, he's supposed to be getting back from getting things bundled up, and, um, getting ahold of me this week to go over that project. I bounced a couple of different things about drainage, offering him to, to get another opinion, other than what I, what I think, and, um, this, decide on the thickness of the tar, and, um, the grade of the tar, and, um, and all that, so Dana has been after me about getting a price to get that done, and, um, I told Dana that I was gonna meet with, um, Warren this week. And, um, so I'm waiting to hear back from a phone call to, he'll just call and, hey, can you meet me in ten minutes, so, um.
That'll be good.
That is, that is in the workings, I haven't, um, forgotten.
And, um, speaking of that parking lot, and the nearby road that is the access, future access, I know there's been, uh, questions about the, the land, uh, what, if anything, would be additional or changed with regards to the road itself, uh, at this point? Like, if, okay, it's time, we've got the property, it's time to go make the access road, like, is it basically just drainage that we'd be working on, or is there other stuff that we would be?
Are you talking to the project to put the road in up back, or just the driveway?
Uh, to keep going up back.
No, that, once that, it, it wouldn't affect, one project's not gonna.
Well, right, but I'm, I'm shifting over towards that project, because it reminded me of it, because they're next to each other.
It shouldn't, it should be fine.
Okay.
Everything, um, Phil is going to talk to the neighbor. He knows him, to see maybe what's going on, and then, by his mailbox, that's got that tar, the state's still calling out a driveway, and it's just a little turnout where they cut it off and move the driveway back when they redid all the work there. So if that tar was gone, and seeded in, and the state will allow us to put another driveway in down
On the opposite side.
On the opposite side, and I'm almost to the point now, and I have walked it, and, and Russell's really looked it over. We might be better off just to not even worry about buying that land on that other side, and just putting the driveway down on the other side, it's not so steep, it's longer and gradual, and, um.
So if we're looking at the fire station, we're talking?
The, uh, the right hand side.
The right hand side, yeah, 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 okay.
And instead of trying to, by the time we pay for a surveyor, to buy twenty feet of land, and then, you know, when you want twenty feet of land, they're gonna put a price on it, because they, they know you need it.
Yeah.
And we already own the other side, so, um, that's something to think about, um. It, it's more gradual, and, and, um, it's longer.
Now, are you thinking only to get into the parking lot, or are you thinking?
No, all the way to the back.
Okay.
Not, not going on the left, on.
I always thought that side made a little more sense, but, we already had the road on the other side, so.
Yeah, no, and I, I did, I, it could have gone either way, and I thought that, I thought that was gonna work, and I was gonna make it work on that side that we started, but, um, once I started flagging things out and taping it off and different, I just didn't want to start doing work on another man's land, because that can really cost you a lot of.
It's, it's good to be thinking of those, thinking ahead, so that's good, I think that's great.
And, I mean, well, a little bit, we already done there, it's fine, it stayed, it's grassing back in, and we got up there with a mower this fall, and mowed that all down to keep it down, so, um, I mean, that's.
Yeah, the extent of work that you've done there is not.
Yeah, that was, what we spent a day down, air cleaning, a little bit.
I mean, you know better, but I've just looked at it, I can imagine.
Yeah, um.
Well, that would give you the, the extra in and out, too.
Yeah.
That's what we're, which is.
I think.
I think that's.
I think if we could get that gentleman to do away with that, by his mailbox, that little tar loop, seed that in for him, dig it out, I mean, we'd have to do it, and get this guy from the state back out, our friend there, and show him what we've done. And, I, I mean, sometimes, the more time you have, the more you think, and the better plan you come up with.
Absolutely, sometimes that must happen, yeah, and, and you make a good point, you don't know what that landlord's gonna want for what you need for land, and.
No.
And anybody sitting here, unless you just have more money than God, you're not gonna donate it, they're gonna get what they can get for it, so.
Yeah.
And then the two entrances, I can't imagine the state would give you too hard of a time on that, would they? Can they?
Because, that's what they do, they go back, what did they do, go back to forty years?
Something like that, yeah.
Forty years, and you can only have so many driveways, and so many, where you only have so many, um, run frontage.
Yeah.
And so they went back to that piece of property before we took the fire station piece out, and then the other piece, and that's what, but I think, if it came right down to it, and, I mean, so, why don't you give that a, a spin in your head for a month to think about, no, but, um.
Oh, good.
In, um.
I like it, because.
I personally would send it, I would do, I'd go to the next step, that's, yeah.
I think that's the way to do it, because then you get the in and out for the public safety building, which is.
You need two ways.
The, the best thing we could possibly do at this point.
And then that, that's slow.
More gradual, yeah.
It's gonna be more gradual, then all of a sudden that yank.
Yeah.
Well, there you go, you got some homework.
If we can make that happen, I'd love to make it happen.
Oh, we can make it, we can make it happen, as long as we, I just gotta make sure everybody's happy with the state.
Yeah.
And then, once the state.
It seems like you've got some really good reasonings behind it, unless somebody's came, you know.
I mean, because, um, he came out, we have the site distance, and you gotta have a hundred feet each way, instead of fifty.
Yeah.
Um, there. Um. Yeah, no, we've done a lot with the state already, but, so let's, I'll talk to Phil tomorrow.
We'll go talk to him.
And then, talk to that gentleman about getting rid of that little bit of tar that the state.
Says is a driveway.
Says is a driveway, well, it's recorded as a driveway, so.
Which would give you what you need.
Yeah.
I like it.
Sounds like a plan, right?
So that's what, that would, I think that would be good.
I think we all agree.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Is that the easiest question of the night?
Yeah, it's a driveway. Stan, Close Pin Bridge, well, they're gonna come back to that after we, after they get, so, yeah, no, things are, um, we've been covering all the calls, the bell rings, and. We've been covering all the calls, the bell rings and. People come and go and do what they need to do and. Got a good group of folks and. They all do a good job.
That's important.
Awesome. All right. Do we have any other reports from department heads that may or may not be here?
Well, I don't know about the ones that aren't here.
Sometimes you get reports.
The department heads.
To read or whatever.
It's like you personally said.
Sorry, couldn't help it. No, I don't have any, anything else. I guess for Russ and I, we've been very busy getting ready for town meeting and now we're at the lull and we're waiting, we're looking forward to Saturday. Um, or maybe next Monday, I'm not sure which. But there's been, I think we're starting to really, we've gotten to the point, or I'm feeling that I'm at the point after being here almost two years, that I almost can keep up with it. And I'm starting to get things done and everything isn't a frazzle. We have, the auditors are coming in April fourth. And it is my goal to get them out of here April fifth.
Who doesn't wanna do that?
And so there's a lot that Wendy and I can do before they get here. Last year. There had been so many people in the bookkeeping job that it just took a long time to research a lot of things, so I think this year I'm looking forward to it. Being a lot.
Well, we can't wait for the update.
I might be a little ambitious.
Yeah, that's okay. Goals are good.
Goals are good.
Well, I think you and Russ do a great job too, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. And everybody that you.
They got it to put up with me.
We have our own.
They do it with me too.
That's right.
All right. Um, did you have anything for, for an update or just here?
I'm just here to hang out.
Okay.
If you have anything for me, um, we still have COVID tests from the state, so, and that's for any town employee, just to reiterate that. So I know we're on the downhill slope, but if you need it for a job or an interview or to go to a place and you need a test. Um, the town web server has it. We went through the whole process, the internet, to make sure we're able to conduct the test and send it to the state, so.
Awesome.
We still have some.
You have everybody under control in this town, right?
All right. Uh, so that would normally move us on to old business, but since we started talking about it, let's go ahead and finish the discussion about closed pin bridge while we're all here.
So we gotta decide what to give him the option to do, is that?
Well, I, so I guess there's.
As we, we all know there's holes.
Let me ask the two, the two questions, three, three or so questions to start with. One will be to Dana and the others will be to Emmett. And so the, the questions would be. What, for, for Emmett, what do you think we should do in the meantime? And when do you think we would be able to do something like the plating? And for Dana, I know we've continually been playing the hurry up and wait game with both the state and engineer and everything else. Where actually are we and do we have a start of construction date yet? Instead of just early fiscal twenty twenty-three, which is twenty twenty-two, second half of twenty twenty-two.
So start there, so he can know how long.
If you've got the construction going in early fiscal twenty-three, I would be very surprised. I don't think it's going to happen. The state.
You mean even that whole year?
I, I mean, um, fiscal twenty-three for the state starts in July and so.
Of this year.
They go from July to July.
They're like July to June, so.
I'm sorry.
I just don't think, see that happening. VHB is coming in to visit with you on April twenty-first. Um, which is the earliest date we could pull together. There are, as you know, some neighbors that are interested in what's happening, Dee is one of them.
Yes, I am.
And I guess I can't blame VHB because the state had those a long time before they, they got it. As you know, um, we've gone back and forth with a twenty-eight foot wide bridge to a twenty-four and now we're back at a twenty-eight. I am concerned that the twenty-eight may delay us even longer. However, I will wait and see what Greg Goodrich has to say when he comes to visit with you.
If the twenty-eight will delay us anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
And what's it, the cost, is it, does it add tons or is it just that footprint of the people's property?
Are, are you talking about the cost of a, of a wider bridge?
Yeah, well, the twenty-eight footer, yeah.
It obviously will be more and that was the, that was the issue with the state, did they wanna pay eighty percent of the increased cost?
Okay.
It's really.
So it didn't have as much with the land that it might encompass?
But the, what was described at least ages ago when we had the meetings was that the increase in the width, while it's more expense, is a minor expense. Especially now compared to the cost of, of the bridge.
Right.
Uh, whereas if we ever wanted to put on a walkway or whatever.
It's gonna be a lot more money.
Way more money.
That's right, yeah.
And a nightmare to maintain after the fact.
And it would be nice to have someone help you with the original eighty percent of their construction.
Right, right. But we, have we got feedback on that additional amount that they would or would not or we haven't really?
Uh, it has been approved by the state.
Oh, now we got the twenty, cuz I.
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, I found me, I thought it was only, you're back to twenty-four.
No, until like last month.
Okay, good, because, because I think part of the first meetings that I came to, they were, they were talking about, oh no, now you're back to twenty-four.
Yeah, exactly.
There is a sense of, for me, of thinking that's too bad, because yes, everything, when you. I mean, granted, you don't want something to look obnoxious either, but the fact that people like to fish and.
Well, I think it would be great. You wanna get something you want, cuz you know, once it's done, you're not going.
That's right, you know, and all these, all these other towns get grants for rockways and trails and, and you know. One thing we can bring as a town is people like to fish off that bridge and not lose their toes.
Well, I'm not sure what changed the state's mind.
Yeah, that is interesting.
I think it's some sort of political.
Somebody called the right person?
Intervention.
Good.
I don't know who, but however, um, it was.
I think that's, I know we're waiting, but I think that's exciting.
I think it's, I think it's exciting and, but I don't think it's, I don't see that bridge being replaced.
But that isn't really gonna hold up the timing of it.
It shouldn't.
I would say. I mean, are they gonna have to take any more property in a sense?
Well, that we don't know.
Oh.
And that is going to be, that's the, that's the elephant in the room of what we need to find out.
I haven't heard one word and I have a property right opposite the bridge.
And I don't know, I don't have plans and, and I haven't, I've asked, but I haven't gotten an answer. So on the twenty-first, I'm really hoping they'll have answers so I can start doing that and go forward.
Are we definitely with the twenty-eight foot or are they gonna go back to the twenty-four? Who knows?
Far as I know, it's the twenty-eight foot that's been.
So the.
I'm going on that, yeah.
The timeframe, not to jump in it. I don't know. The timeframe for. All right, well, April whatever meeting that you just said that I.
April twenty-first.
And then what, we've gotta decide that we.
Well, you'd have to do, if you, if you're taking land or if you need some land and if someone did not sell it to you. And you had to go through the court to get it.
Right.
You're talking much more time and much more expense.
But that's why I'm asking, is there any, is there any landing question that hasn't been negotiated yet?
None of it's been.
None of it, none of, none of the.
None, none of.
I've been asking what we need to do for about a year and we haven't had the sign off of the state or the engineers yet.
To even, to even know what you need.
That's right. We, we haven't, simply we haven't known.
God, I could be giving you like a, it's fun working for the state, come on. Just think of the federal government. You know what I mean, cuz you, that to me is always the.
We tried that, that method, but.
No, they wouldn't.
So no matter what.
A year then, at least.
Isn't gonna happen for a, a moon or two, so.
Exactly.
I guess I can go down to Concord tomorrow and see what I measure up and see what I need for plates and see.
How much that would be?
Well, when I priced them out, when I priced out three of them to, to do that last year, a year ago, they were five thousand dollars a piece. For them.
You mean for white planes or?
Close, close pin.
Last spring, last spring, last summer. You guys were trying to figure out what was going on over there and you had me get a price from Cohen's. To see what they were, so if they had to stay there another year to see if we were gonna buy them.
All right.
Or replace them, correct? Am I right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And a year ago, for them plates, they were five grand a piece and steel, it hasn't doubled, but it almost has.
Seventy-five hundred now.
So was that, would that, with two plates, do it, be enough for that bridge?
Well, I'm gonna try, what I'm, what I'm gonna probably do on that bridge is instead of doing them eight by tens. I'll see what's going on and, and maybe get something just to make it work for now in silk. Cuz the smaller they are at the moment, it half inch thick instead of one inch. I mean, that will hold up seventeen, you know, what it needs to. So I'll go down there tomorrow, spend some time, see what I can do to get it patched up, but it's not gonna happen tomorrow. But there's holes there, so I mean, I don't.
This might be a dumb question.
When do you think any of this could, could actually happen?
Well, it all depends. You might get down there tomorrow and come home with all the steel you need and they might say, well.
Oh, I mean, cuz you're like, you couldn't just patch over it anyway, even if you got the steel.
No, I've done that so many times now, the hole's gone from here to here and it's, it's no.
But putting, so, so but getting, let's say you go down and they have it and we say, put it over it. You don't, the weather doesn't need to be particular at this point.
The only thing I gotta do is if it snows is pick the plow up so I don't plow them off the top.
Or do what you, do what you need to.
See, Russell had a good idea because Chucky got the scales, he bought the junk scales from the dump. But I went down and measured the bridge at seventy feet long, scales were only forty. We were gonna lay that right down.
Oh, for crying out loud.
Yeah, no, Russell's always thinking.
Wow, that's pretty darn good.
Another. Bridge up there, but it's just way too, it's, it would be way too.
Well, we just, we just did a job where the state supplied, well, it was on the state forestry part, where they had a bridge built or whatever. We had to put over a culvert. But that was, that made me, that just made me think as you were talking, does the state have any of these bridges that are?
Oh, the Bailey Bridges. No, that takes a lot of, that takes a lot, what, I guess if worse comes to worse. Down there is, um, we could get some down on that lower end and come up through there and, and we could mat it.
Well, that's what I was gonna do, that's what I was gonna ask too, yeah.
Make some dirt ramps or tide ramps down on the other end, but um, I mean, them mats are thick, but I mean.
Could you, could you, yeah, do they have anything that's?
Well, you could make them. I mean, you could go down to Kobe's and buy some old bridge plank, three inch by in, I don't know, this. I'll go look at it tomorrow and see what we can do and.
But that was my next thought is matting it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's really funny. What were you gonna do with the scales at the dump? And you said you couldn't, they didn't work on the bridge?
No, they're not long enough. They're only forty feet and the bridge is seventy.
Good, good idea that is.
To let, you know, to stuff that on there for a, a bridge on top of a bridge.
Yeah, right, I understand, oh wow.
To make it all work.
Oh, okay. That's, well, at least using, that's using your head.
I guess the question comes down to, do we close the bridge right now?
What was that? Do we close the bridge right now? Well, it'd probably be the safest way, I have to say, cuz I'm looking at those holes all, and I was at the bridge taking pictures and three cars stopped by and they all had something to say and it wasn't good. So I said, we're discussing it tonight, we're discussing it.
Well, I guess. I got terrible liability. I got bridge close signs, it wrote, bridge closed ahead, I've got all that. I got the signs from the floods that we had back quite a few years ago.
Let me ask you a question real quick. So if you go down to Cohen's and you find that they have what we need and it's fifteen grand to plate it. When, how soon could we plate it?
Well, we can plate it now and it will be on top of the frozen ground and, and, and stuff. And then we might have to move them later and dig out the dirt and get them set where they're supposed to be.
Right, I mean.
But the only thing on that other end of that bridge is where you come off that bridge, that drops down, so if you put the plate over here, it's gonna teeter totter, so you gotta. It, it, it's a project. It's a, it's.
Do we have to plate the whole bridge or?
No, 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 just the end. Just the end in about five feet. So, and I might. One, one, if I got a ten foot long one. Even by four feet and put it on the, on the abutment on the, on the lower end and then brought that back. I mean, I could probably get a, that would, that would help us a lot. And I don't even know if I'd have to go one inch.
Could we, could we have him, could we, could we? Rediscuss this and, you know, sooner, sooner, maybe sooner before another. I, I don't know, I just, you know when you start shutting things down, that.
Oh, I know, it's a pain and then emergency service to the other end of town.
I'm like, if we, if there's anything we can possibly look into and we've, I mean, hey, if we've, if we've. Exercised or exhausted, I should say, I exercise, exhausted every, every avenue and, and it's just stupidly costly, yeah, they can go around, but.
Right, so let me go tomorrow and see what I can find for metal, measure that up, go down and see and um. I'll rig something together, so something, I'll figure something out in the morning. To doctor that up enough to, and then go down and get a plate, at least one.
Just, I mean, I, I don't know about how you feel, but I think shutting it down unless that's our only avenue.
No, and that isn't a good thing because you stop, we got.
It's just, it's not even an easy get around.
We got two, we got, we got two paramedics. An EMT. Right, Joe's down on that end, and Eric.
You'd like to be able to say something like closed except to emergency personnel, but you know that if you, you know that if it's possible.
Who'd be writing tickets every day?
Well, you know that if it's possible to go across, people are going to.
Yeah, even, even, even if you had the sign up there, bridge closed.
Someone's still gonna do it.
Without, without having something in front of it, you're.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that one. Back, back when Addy was the road agent and I had all them signs out down there on Dear Meadow Road and you couldn't even go through that by Ricky's pit. Cuz tobacco would lift up and start floating and this Ford, no, it did and it scamp me, cuz I've been tired, it started. And this Ford pickup come up through and the water, the headlights were underneath the water and he, he went just like this when he went by and he just. Kept, and I, I have no clue how he even, how, why the old truck didn't even stall, but if it had a.
Lucky, yeah, right, he was just lucky.
He'd have been gone.
Huh?
No electronics.
But it don't matter what you put up for signs, people don't. So I'll go work on that tomorrow and then if I can't get it plated. Or I'll put the, put the signs up. First thing in the morning while I'm going to get that, so and then if somebody does drive across it and the things are up and they pop a tire or something goes bad. Then they can't come back onto us.
That's, yeah, yeah, that's a big thing. You gotta watch in this day and age of people that like to sue people for anything.
So why don't I do that? Why don't I put some signs up in the morning?
And is it gonna say bridge closed?
Yeah. I'll put one up here, bridge closed ahead and I'll put one on each side of the bridge, but I'll leave it so you can still. Whatever.
About pass year rest.
No.
As mu, as much as I don't want to do it. I would like to make the motion, or I think I have to make the motion, that we close the bridge until such times as Emmett can make the bridge passably safe. And then Emmett may reopen the bridge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess aye. I just, I don't feel, I feel like there's no, there's no like warning. That's bothering me a lot.
It's not that I want to.
No, no, I know, but.
It's because, but if somebody even, whatever, it's, it's quite a liability for the town.
Anyone who's been driving across that bridge for the past two months has their warning.
Look at my phone, it's the hole. I could look at my phone and see the whole.
There's only one thing that we have to do is first thing in the morning. I'll have to get ahold of them at the school. And.
Yeah, I mean, do you want to give yourself?
No, because if, if, if something's gonna happen, now that we talked about it, it's gonna happen tomorrow.
Well, right, tomorrow.
The only, the only thing with the school is you're gonna change that bus route and you're gonna have such irate parents.
It don't matter, what are you gonna do?
Don't have no choice.
What do you, I mean, uh, Larry, Larry that works for me. I sent him down with the back, I'll just wanted to clean that off and he said, "I won't do it again." Cause you can feel the whole bridge moving, that whole lo- lower end jump.
Oh, I know, it's bad, I just. Too bad we didn't have twenty-four hours though.
Well, it is, but I, I don't know.
What time does the, the bus normally go through there?
Six thirty, quarter, seven.
Yeah, six thirty.
Well, probably they'll have to go through, cause I'm not gonna be down there at six thirty in the morning.
Well, I think.
So maybe you post it right after.
Hold on, I mean, we're gonna let it happen, I mean, do we, do we try to be somewhat? I get it, I get what you're saying, but something in my, my gut tells me, well, I know that if I let, just, just hold on for a second, let me just. And, and you can tell me I'm wrong, it's fine.
No, you're not wrong.
But I, well, or whatever you call it, crazy, but, or take in our risk that maybe we shouldn't be putting the town in, but. If it was me, I'd think, well, why does, why is Monday the day? Why couldn't they give me some notice so that I can know to re- reroute my, my schedule so that I can get my kids to daycare on time? Be to my job on time, get the kids to school, can we do it? Will we give somebody twenty-four hours or do we put up? I just, I don't know, is there any other way to give some people some notice?
But if Mother Nature came down through there tonight and take the bridge out, what's, whatever. And, and I, I'm just gonna say, I'm just gonna tell you, I'm just gonna tell you from my, from my point of view.
Yeah.
As not a, a subcontracted road agent. I'm just telling you, I'm not a civil engineer. I'm not a bridge builder. But that bridge is failing, to my best knowledge, there's holes, it's dangerous. And if you three people tell me, Emmett, it's fine, just keep, we're gonna keep going, then, oh, that. That's all good with me, because you guys are my boss.
There with those holes.
Oh, and I'm not, I'm not gonna tell you that, I, cause I'm no bridge engineer either.
And that's the smaller one.
And do I wanna shut it down?
I mean, maybe we should have been doing this a little bit prior to this, but.
But Wednesday, Wednesday.
After all this.
Or tomorrow when the sun shines and somebody comes down across that with a motorized bicycle and, and goes head on.
Oh, yeah, no, that's gonna be bad.
Lays out the street, you guys are.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, and the, the, like.
And, and I'm not disagreeing and I'm not saying I, I don't agree, I just, I wish that we, if, if it goes to this point that we had. And I'm just saying it because I feel like I gotta, that we had said a week ago.
I've been doctoring that bridge all winter.
Right, right.
Doctored that bridge all last summer.
No, no, and I'm not saying you're not, that's, that's not, don't miss this through what I'm saying, I, I, I'm not saying that a bit, I just.
No, I think that it's just deteriorated so bad in the last week.
I say, that's exactly the case, all of a sudden it went crazy.
Last week, it's, it's nearly gone downhill fast.
You know, this rain and, and I, and I understand that too, I just.
Cause while it was frozen, there, there weren't actually holes.
Oh, no, you know why? I filled them in, I filled them in with hay wrap, that plastic hay wrap and put that stuff in there and put cold water on it and it froze. Well, Mother Nature's working against us right at the moment, was that the right thing to do? Probably not, but.
But it worked for a while. It worked for the winter.
I, I'm not a, I'm not a plumber, I'm not a plumber's son, I can plug the holes till the plumber come.
The, uh, like, I understand what you're saying about.
Oh, me too.
The warning, the, I think I would be more inclined to try to give more of a warning if. It weren't, that it's a pretty easy bridge to get around and it's really bad. Like if it were the, the bridge between us and Boscoon, for example, like. To, to go a different route, once you're getting to the bridge is really annoying.
Right, long way around.
But to go up detour and take a left is an extra, what, half mile, mile at the most, so.
I, I don't even know if the, does the school bus go over that bridge now? I don't think it does.
It does.
It does?
I followed it one day from four twenty-seven.
You did? The big wa- the big bus?
Goes both ways.
That's scary. And it's not so much, even if there's no kids on it, it's just the, the length of the bus and the, oh god.
Actually, that's better, how long the bus is, it's gonna be longer than the shorter bus. Because if the bridge fell out and the tail caught on one end and the hood shot off the other, then we could just cut that off and.
Bus bridge.
Oh, open the door.
Anyway.
So I'll do my best to not have it closed down too long, but it all depends on.
Well, so what will be, so like, let's say you find something that will work. And then I know you're not sure how long, how many days it will take, is it, do you need anything from us?
No, just, just, I just wanted to tell you.
Okay.
What was.
So you'll do what you can do and we don't need to be part of that, okay.
Not unless you wanna come down, run the shovel or the pad.
Whatever you need, bud.
I know.
I'm just down the street and that's.
No, I, I didn't want us to hold anything up, that was all.
Have my own.
It's a guy's, yeah, it's true, so, it's a guy thing.
But, um, yeah, if there's anything that I can do to help that, once it is starting to happen, let me know. Cause I would definitely like to keep that bridge.
Me too.
I'm sure we will be getting plenty of questions, especially if it has been closed at town meeting about the bridge. Though I expected to hear plenty of questions about both that and Light Plains Bridge anyway at town meeting. So just make sure you have all of the most up to date information for both that we have at those points. Which I don't think has changed in a while, but.
I think I do.
But, yeah.
Especially when you can't get any answers.
Yeah, right.
At least the current people are mostly giving us answers.
That's right, that's right.
So we've done well there, alright, um, anything else on these topics?
Oh man, I'm tired.
Alright.
So when people call, excuse me, when people call us about the bridge, we're telling them that it's closed because it's, it's an emergency. The bridge is dangerous and it's gonna reopen as soon as possible, or what should we tell them?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
You're a politician, tell them what they wanna hear.
Temporarily closed for repairs, emergency repairs.
Right.
Yeah, it is, an emergency, cause like you said, I never even thought about it, bicycles, those are the right.
I mean, the other day, the other day, what day was it last week? It was sixty that one day, how many motorcycles?
Yeah, a lot of people out.
Quite a few.
Yeah, a lot of people.
A lot of people on motorcycles.
Well, I don't know that that would happen, they just might be over their handlebars.
Have you seen how fast some of them go sideways down that? Alright, so moving on to old business, that moves us to the fire chief job description.
We had, um, you had asked me to put this together, Emmett and I have spoken a little bit about the minimum qualifications. And he had some suggestions, I haven't changed them yet, Emmett, um, but, um. I guess I'll let you say what you think.
No, that's all well and good how, and Rob put that together.
Yeah, I plagiarized Rob's.
Is that the same one?
Yeah.
Just about.
Mostly, and, and that, that's all well and good. In not to, I mean, this is how I feel, you guys put it together, but, um. With Jake, he's fire one and fire two, but he's not an EMT. And Ben's fire one, but he's in an EMT. I think that's what Rob has together is great for a full-time department, somebody that's getting paid. Sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year to make it worth their while, but. I, I think the way that should be worded is, should be the selectman's discretion of the time of the person that. They're whatever, it's cause they might have some of it and then willing to get more. Or, or do more, or whatever, I mean, I was hired on years of experience.
Well, then that should be accounted for. And that, those were the suggestions of changing some of the wording, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, um. I just think that's a lot for a, a, I mean. It is and it isn't, you can look at it two different ways. But I, I think, uh, that's how I see it.
Now, what are you, what are you? What are you talking about? I mean, there's a whole bunch of things here, why are you?
At the, what is it, number ten? Under the minimum qualifications required, it's just almost at the end.
Okay, at the, oh, okay.
The next to the last one.
Okay, alright.
One thing about having those things in there, if the town went out, outside recruiting someone. It, it would be a different story than what we have now. Maybe we could add something in there that would say, um, leave these in here, but it's a selectman's discretion.
Yeah, yeah.
Or something like that.
And then if they didn't want to, whatever, because usually what the, what happens at the firehouse is. The, the members of the firehouse figure out who their next chief or the chief's gonna be or when they're. To move on, correct, Rob?
Well, I mean, they, they have a vote.
No, then they come to the select board.
But the select would be the fire.
Yeah, the, the select board makes the final, the, the final, um. Say. But for somebody to, I mean.
Are, are, are the ones that we have in front of us after changes towards this? Because, uh, the things that he's saying, I don't see as being in here as an issue, the way that it's worded. Or, or maybe I'm missing something. So, so what I have written, in front of me right now for minimum qualifications required, which. I don't think is what I remember reading from something a while back, probably a couple of years ago.
You had read the one that Rob had done a few years ago, I believe, yeah.
So what, what's here is high school diploma or GED equivalent. Eight years of firefighting experience, knowledge of modern fire suppression, prevention and emergency medical services, principles, procedures and techniques. Knowledge of applicable laws, ordinance, standards and regulations and knowledge of proper operation of the equipment. That's all that's listed. So what are, what is the, what is the issue that we're talking about at this point?
I thought that.
Which, that's fine, that.
Really? Maybe I fixed this and forgot.
Previously, it mentioned like having fire one and two and, and specific trainings. And I don't see anything in here about training.
Then you changed, that's been changed as, as the one that you sent me.
I guess so, yeah.
And that kinda covers, that leaves it to be able to be, you know, more or less somebody that's.
I'm sorry, I thought I didn't.
Right, and then at the bottom, you know, you put in there, "Selectmen's discretion" and then they can do, if that's there, then they can change things. If they need to or want to.
I don't think there's anything in that that would need selectmen's discretion. Because if, if they're not knowledgeable of, of that stuff, they're, they're not gonna do it, the job anyway. It's different if it's, you know, requires fire one, two and EMT or is going to go, you know, get them within X amount of time. Which is how I would probably expect to have seen it worded in most, you know, forward-going kinds of contract things. But, um, again, this isn't a contract, it's a general job description for future, so.
Even for me, like the eight years.
I was gonna say, you have this, Rob?
So I, I, I'm just here to hang out tonight, but I haven't seen that probably in a few years and it does sound like there's two different copies there. The intent was, and it was nothing against Emmett because I supported him when.
Oh, you did, yeah, no, no.
It was more so, moving forward, we gotta think better than where we are now, so. Every person that joins the volunteer fire department now needs to be fire one certified or they're liable to be in the building. So we could never want them to not be a chief someday, down the road, you know, with those folks. If we're requiring them now to be fire one certified or medically certified to be able to be in the back of our ambulance, that's a state requirement. We should, we should probably move towards that with leadership. In lieu of experience, or you know, you put that caveat because there's obviously people that have been around a long time. With experience that probably have more knowledge than the folks that even went to the class, and I put Emmett in that category. So keeping certification is very important, but having that leeway or that second in lieu of, or addition two or. Whatever to, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't eliminate it to make, not even pick on him, make a different name in there, whoever the chief is. Fitted, I would make it what you want and put the, the okay because of the experience in, in the grandfather clause of that. To work, so, so don't water it down, but somehow account for it, I guess.
What is it, when you say get certified, I haven't seen, I wouldn't even be, I haven't got a clue.
There's different levels, there's a paramedic, there's an EMT, there's EMR, there's fire one, there's fire two, there's fire three. There's fire investigation, there's fire, there's, I mean, you can go on forever.
And that was the intent of, of that original.
And when you, when you say this, there's a state law for that.
So, well, for two different things, so to be an interior firefighter, you're required to have fire one certification, that's a state mandate. And then there's the EMT side of it where to work in the back of an ambulance, you know, we do have a transporting ambulance. So you need to have your medical requirements.
Our ambulance doesn't go out with at least one, to, to transport, you need two EMTs. To go work with Tookie, for the ambulance to leave, you need one EMT to go with the ambulance. Or if the hortican ambulance drives by and you have two firemen, they can take a vehicle. Follow the hortican ambulance because they have medical trained to go help and lift, I mean, there's all different.
But don't our people in the fire department have those? So basically, they must have most of them, maybe not everybody, if they've been around.
Well, if they're a truck, um, some of them that are pump operators, um.
So they don't have the EMT stuff?
Right.
Which you don't expect, but they know how to do their stuff, so.
Sure.
So I just was wondering why.
But, but we're not talking about everybody in the fire department, we're talking about the chief.
Right.
So with the minimum required certific- certificates, or would that be weird to say? With the minimum.
That wouldn't be the language, but yeah, specific requirements, yeah.
I'm not good at language, I was just, I didn't know if that's what we were trying to accomplish here.
Well, I think those were in the previous one and, so I'm not quite sure. I think that might be why Dana went off and maybe he's getting the old copy, um, but.
And I always say minimum if, if it's, if it's state required, you know what I mean, that. Just in case someday.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not gonna be.
As all, as all I, you know, and any, I'm the first one to say that, to me, you can get certified all you want, but. If you've lived it and done it, it's, you're, to me, but that doesn't mean that as a, as a.
Right, but to send somebody into a burning building that hasn't had the training, then it all, I mean, that's my. Feet can and then it comes down to whatever and then, you know, it's all, and that, and that is it. If they're not certified, they don't go into a burning building, if they're, if they're certified pump operator and a driver, they take the truck, they're the EMT and. And they go with the ambulance.
So with the proper certifications per state law?
There's, there's, there's gotta be a wording, something like that, that could be used for it, but.
I thought that sounded good.
It does, but you know, proper certifications for what and?
Well, well, I think, I mean, being broad's not being broad, but just to say that we're not gonna.
This was the, um.
Or we not let somebody get voted in that doesn't have the certain certification.
Well, it wouldn't get voted in, you folks would be the, whoever, the board of select.
Well, right now, it doesn't say that, the discretion.
So the original, uh, apparently the old copy was high school diploma or GED equivalent, college degree preferred. So that was the, the college degree portion that was different.
Yeah.
Eight years of experience in fire and three years in a supervisory capacity such as a fire officer rank. So the supervisory portion is not listed, uh, that's the change. Must be certified firefighter two, EMT, ICS or NIMs compliant. Preferences go to those that possess the following, fire officer two, fire inspector one and fire. Preferences go to those that possess the following, fire officer two, fire inspector one, and fire instructor one, and any other leadership classes that may apply. So, that's the part that's not there at all.
But for five thousand dollars a year.
And most of those are just preferences, I mean, if you read that the way it says, it's Fire One, I think, was the requirement in the high school diploma.
Yeah.
A college degree preferred, if somebody has it, somebody doesn't.
No, no, it says must be certified in firefighter two, EMT, ICS or NIMS.
Yes, we all are in, in that stuff anyway, so.
Yeah, so, so that, yeah. The, the preferences are later on, with like officer and so on, but the, that, that was the requirement for the certification portion. Thorough knowledge is, looks like the exact same language. Same with considerable knowledge of laws, ordinances, et cetera, and the skill. The last one that is not there is kind of the end of the last point, which is ability to train, supervise and lead subordinate personnel. Which, I, you know, I would hope that anyone who's going for a leadership position would, would possess that.
But someday that may not have, you know, you may have it.
But yeah, so that was the original stuff that's here.
So, who, who changed this, why?
Uh, I believe this was, and correct me if I'm wrong, in reformatting it and making sure that everything would kind of fit from taking things from different pieces and, because this hasn't, this is not something that's ever been approved.
Oh.
And so, we were working toward, uh, Dana was working towards something that we could approve.
Okay, alright.
So, that's where we are.
We're trying to be professional.
So, and basically, it's the, if, there's another chief coming along, because I know, I love you, but you know you're not gonna be a chief forever.
Oh, no, 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 no.
So, so this is like, so this would be, so you'd want these people to, to have most of this stuff, to be good. Not just somebody just decide, I'm gonna be the fire chief, so.
So, you said, you said everybody there basically, um, has either firefighter two, EMT, ICS or NIMS. Okay.
One or the, I don't know.
Not a very.
This is, this is an or out of that list, so.
I feel real awkward, because this is not, I came here to discuss that.
Oh, no, no, no.
I brought here to pick the jobs, descriptions.
You know, here's, here's the thing.
That's something I came up with, and actually that was put forward to the board of selectmen when I was a chief, as job descriptions for my officers and myself, just a whole list of convulsions, here's what you got, you know.
Oh, this original thing that he's reading off now?
Yeah, so it was, whether it was adopted by the town or not, I.
I don't think it.
It was just put forward to, hey, here's what we're doing, here's what we're looking for, uh, type of scenario. So, all, all that stuff is, is basic fire service lingo, so to speak. So, your ICS is incident command systems, which is like military, that's what gives you a chain of command. You know, in lieu of a chief, a, a senior ranking officer plays that role, in lieu of a senior ranking officer, a senior firefighter plays that role, so it, there's a reason to know that standard, because it lays out how to operate at an emergency scene. NIMS is just the national incident management system of that, which now, if you even want grant funding, you need to be NIMS compliant versus ICS, ICS was kind of the old standard. Uh, so it's either or, depending on what new curriculum or old curriculum we had. And, and most of us here, it's right, through the years, we've gotten the ICS and that kind of stuff, so that's not really an issue. The Fire One and the EMT is just, you can be a fire chief without that certification, so don't, don't hear me wrong. Having that certification allows you to be inside with the folks, doing it when you have to, because, you know, to be a certified EMT, to be on the ambulance, so if you had to go back in there and do your stuff, or you see one guy in a truck and you're putting yourself with a pack inside, it's just, it's a liability thing that just makes it a better picture. You pick what you want, like I said, you're not, you're not wrong to come up with the right thing for this town. That's just something I threw together, I, I had them, and then some, so that's why that was an easy thing to put in place for me to say, hey, this is a decent standard, and, um, you know, the next person, we try to condition the chief and stuff, let's work towards that, you know, you're, you're the deputy or whatever, hey, why don't you take this class? Because when I'm not here, it's important to have EMS, STF, and fire, and, and so. It's not to beat on anybody, and again, this was, this is.
Oh, right, right.
I didn't even know you were talking about it, but that's why I put that in place. And it's not just the chief, I had a deputy chief, I had a captain, a lieutenant, and it spelled out what I, what I felt. And that's the worst scenario, that we're beaten up, everyone else had less. So, your deputy chief was maybe just Fire One certified, or your lieutenants were just, hey, a fire lieutenant could just have fire certification, EMS, napster, and EMS, so it didn't wash everybody in the, in the town, oh, it just, if you're in that role, leading those folks to do that job, the extra official training, again, experience is worth its weight in gold, and I have a lot of respect for Emmett with that. But moving forward, you know as well as I do, that we're not, we don't have as much building fires as we used to. The younger, the younger folks aren't getting the experience like the older folks had. So, a certification with no experience, or no certification and no experience is dangerous. So, it's not, at some point, you, you need to put up some hedges, some guardrails. You know, and, and the, the guardrails or the SOGs or the job descriptions are just so people don't take a U-turn and head off of the woods. They could be on a different lane, we could shift things, but we still need to go down the same road. So, we're not hurting, harming the town, is the way I would put all that, but you, you folks should look at it and figure out what you want, and it shouldn't be my opinion, I guess.
Well, the, the context is, is helpful, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, that's where I came, I just wanted to tell you where I was coming from.
Yep.
Well, he's also a firefighter.
Oh, yes.
Well, that would be my, my biggest, I, I, I totally agree with everything that you're saying with the, you know, you don't, I'm just gonna say it in Marlow's terms, you don't want, yeah, I'm some you-hoo that just got in there and ended up as chief. You know, with no experience, but.
It says eight years, I mean, I'm not.
Yeah, eight years is a long time, that's right.
I told you ten, I think ten years of it.
So, so my, my only concern would be is, it is, in a sense, volunteer, right? I mean, it, I mean, there's places that are not, so you would just, we wouldn't wanna limit, but that's probably where the selectman's discretion comes involved, you just wouldn't wanna limit yourself that somebody at times maybe could have even a little less than eight years and, and, and be, be spot on, for whatever reason. Maybe they, maybe they work full-time, I, I, I don't know, there's all kinds of reasons, you know. Even as a, as an owner and you're, you're, you're hiring people and they're, they're young twenties, mid twenties, to, to run six hundred thousand dollar machines and, and, you know, you know, five million dollar company, working amongst that, you go, oh my God, I, I get that, so I just wouldn't want us to be limited to, thank God, thank, God forbid, all of a sudden like, oh crap, we can't even find a chief, because they can't meet any of them.
Right, no, and I know that, you know, everything that Rob has there, had in place is great, I mean, there's nothing wrong with education.
Absolutely, right.
At the end of the day, if somebody did a good job and was willing to step up and, if they didn't have one or the other, and they, they weren't just zoned out that day, because they didn't have it. That's, that's why I said selectman's discretion, and then, well, we'll give you eight months to complete this, or tell me why you don't think you need it, or.
I, I really like the, uh, coming from tech, a, a very common thing is, you know, you'll have X period of time to get, you know, whatever certification you need for, for a position, so that seems really good to me, if that sounds like it's gonna work out. But it sounds like there's a little more back and forth that, uh, probably the two of you should, should work on to look at this.
It's. But Jake wasn't EMT at one time, correct, Rob? Pretty sure, no?
I think he has EMR, right?
Right, yeah, so Jake's next in line, so he doesn't have his EMT. Ben's the next in line, the third person, he has his EMT, he takes care of all the EMS stuff, the ambulance. And is ahead of that, he's not the chief, he's the captain of the EMS. And he takes care of all that, which works great now, so. And I'm not crapping on nobody, but Jake steps into play and Ben steps up, or Jake puts another deputy in underneath him, and they're doing the EMS stuff. I just, I, I think it's a small town, if you have the right people in the right places, you can get the job done.
Well, and, and again, I, I think that's also the difference between running a fire department and being the chief. With, this is not like, hey, all of these other people have to have all of the certifications. And from what you just said, with, you know, one's got EMS, the other's got fire, et cetera, that, that passes what's listed here. So, I, I, I think it's, uh, boohoo's is to just.
Clean it up and.
Yeah, clean it up, have the conversation, see, see what certifications might be good, and then find some language that says, and if they don't have them, they'll have, like, the first year to go get them, or something of that nature.
City of Conk is looking for a new fire chief.
Really?
Yeah, but I don't think, uh, I mean, we can, we can steal theirs, but I don't think I'm just gonna look the same as their requirements.
No, 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 I just, I just, yeah, so.
I don't think he hasn't been in here that long.
No.
Was he called some bigger town?
Two years, right, I know?
No, it hasn't been, because Chief Newberry retired the night, the, the Saturday at our firehouse, and just a year ago, and we had the critique after the, um, fire on Dear Meadow Road.
That's right.
So, it's, it's been just a year, one year. One year, the twenty-fourth, Chief Newberry's been done one year, the twenty-fourth of February. And then, um, Chief Brown. Yeah, so it's been a year and a few days.
So, he, so when did he go, to a different, bigger company or something, or just retired because he's old?
I was told not to tell.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I'm gonna.
Sometimes less is more, yeah.
Alright. So.
Alright, so I'll work with Emmett on that.
Okay, good, that's, like, now we're.
I'm a little, I'm a little confused of what those actually are, so maybe by that time I'll do some research and find out.
You mean all of the certificate stuff, yeah, yeah, so, you guys do good. I don't know, I don't know what that.
Oh, I know, I learned about that, I'm just saying that.
Well, it's no different than you sending somebody to tractor, trailer driving.
That's right, no, no, right.
And then come back out, and they got their license, and they still can't back the trailer up.
And isn't that the truth, my friend?
We won't talk, we won't talk about any specific companies who have a pension for that, uh, as tractor-trailer drivers.
That's what Addy used to say when he was hiring a truck driver, you take them for a drive, and if they don't come back, you, I'll know we don't need them.
I think one time my husband didn't think he was coming back.
Alright, so that moves us on to our other old business, which is town policies.
So, the town policy I put in here, I have talked to Michelle Trembley on the investment policy. And she did not have any objection to any of it, she did have some questions for me, which I have worked with on, on that.
Have you guys done the policies on the firehouse yet?
We have been focused on town policies, not specifically on fire, police, et cetera.
No, because what you do, I'd like to sit on, on that and go.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I could learn them better, I mean, I've read through them, but learn them better, and then I know there's one that I saw that you can't have a dog in the fire truck, but I'd like to change that, because we did.
Thought you'd have a dalmatian on the truck.
Couple of times, car accidents is when we brought it in.
I wonder why that was in place, why?
Did you see that?
No, but it just sounds.
Yeah, I'm wondering, my question is this.
That's why you don't read them that closely, Emmett.
Some of these policies, what they call policies, I think is more of an operational type of, um, thing.
No, no, I didn't mean to get you guys off track, but I'd like to, when you do that, have Dana give me a call, and I'd like to, then I can go over them and then read them again and, and work with, and.
Sounds like a plan.
I, I'd like to eventually get through all of the policies in our town, but I wouldn't want to go, hey, let's go through the police or, let's go through the fire department policies.
Well, I think they were.
I prefer, I'd prefer you to go through that, and then come with recommendations to Dana.
No, this, this, these were town policies, I'm pretty sure, these weren't a policy that, that were drawn up at the firehouse, I don't believe. I'm pretty sure the one I read was a town policy, because it was brought to my attention.
Well, and like Dana's saying, though, some of these policies shouldn't really be policies, they should be.
So anyways, when we do, when we get that far, I'd like to, then I.
I'll, I'll, I'll let you know, Emmett.
I'll understand them better and, um.
So, I guess I'm saying, I don't see that you really need to make, other than updating the dates and so forth, on the investment policy, I don't see where anything has changed. And neither did Michelle.
That's good.
Sounds good.
So, does that mean that one's good to go, right?
So, that one's good to go.
So, we can put that behind us.
Yeah, and you know, you're doing pretty good on those.
When, when was that reaffirmed last?
In twenty-one, February seventh, or something like that of twenty-one.
Oh, February eighth, it's written on this paper here.
Oh, February eighth, oh, I beg your pardon.
Two thousand and twenty-one.
You know, I'm gonna have to give myself two weeks off with pay.
I'll be there.
Oh, okay.
The next policy was the, it's a fairly new one, the meeting live streaming and video recording policy. And Russ had updated that, um, after discussion about who has priority and so forth. So, I think that should be good to go.
I just have a, we made a policy in our, um, Forest Fire Wardens Association. We had to put a policy in place to live stream a meeting, did you folks do that yet?
That's all, look, that's.
That's, that's, we have one, but we've been going through, uh, what should be done for updates as we go through it. And so now we're looking at the updated, revised version. These would only, uh, these only affect public meetings for the town pursuant to ninety-one A. So, it's only when we have to post a meeting that, that this policy goes into place. So, that would not affect, for example, police, fire, forest, et cetera, that's your own policies.
Okay, no, no, I just, check.
I think everything that we discussed is already in this one.
Yeah, but that's not the one, I found another typo in it, so.
What, the live streaming thing?
So, let's not sign that one.
I think though you will feel good that you'll fix that, and then we'll put some interest to it.
Sounds good.
Moving on.
Yes.
Oh, I know where it is.
And I trust you've got an appendix for it with.
Should be in there.
I don't see the appendix on it.
There should be.
You only gave me this.
Might have been two-sided, but, but there was.
That's okay, because I know, I know that the appendix is set up so that we can put something on it and the reasoning and the date that we approve it, and so on, so, um, I think this works fine.
And the appendix only has supervisors, Jeff was coming with them.
Okay, and it should also have audio for voting, or what more can I have?
So, that's not pursuant to ninety-one A, so that's a separate thing.
That makes sense then, okay, thank you. Alright.
The next one was the delegation of deposit authority, and, um, you saw what Michelle's take was on that. And I'm not really sure why we have this either, because it's a law, and it's in the RSA. However, I don't object to it, and I can see Michelle's points, but some of the people she's mentioned, they're really, you know, don't go to the bank. Specifically me. And that's okay.
Yep. The, the only, the only reason I could think of would be, you know, for example, if someone was dropping off like a tax payment, or something like that, paid in cash, but we didn't have any of the tax. any of the tax people here.
I did go to the bank one time-
But that doesn't really make any sense, because without the tax person, they can't get a receipt for it, so.
The, I did go to the bank the time that the fellow brought in like $7,000 in cash to purchase back White Plains, and it happened at like 4:15 in the afternoon, and I didn't want to have $7,000 in cash hanging around the office.
Good thinking, I know, could have been on the toilet.
Yeah, in fact. Anyway.
Yeah, so-
So in that case, is that-
But, so, but I don't, but that's a very, you know, that's a very unusual.
So meaning you'd probably still just do it and doesn't need to list you in here anyway?
And, yeah, I, I, you know, that's, you know, the tax, the town clerk and the tax collector and the treasurer, they say respective deputies, and I can see where you'd need them sometimes.
From the town's general fund, federal financial institution.
So you're trying to circle the administrative assistant, what is this chat with Michelle? Is that what she wants to get?
Oh, that was, that was my notes from last time.
Oh, 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 okay.
So I-
So is that, you want it out of there, administrative assistant, or do you, why is it circled?
Administrative assistant was the previous position that turned into the town administrator, which was-
Oh, okay.
I was, I don't have any problem with supplying someone with a deposit slip. I can do that.
Now-
So you want to change the-
I was just gonna update it, that's, yeah.
To the town administrator, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does, now you mentioned that all of this is just state law anyway, so do we actually need the extra delegation, like this isn't really, this isn't a policy?
Not really, it's just restating the state law, and I don't really think you really need it. I mean, we're supposed to go by the state law, right?
Yeah.
Always have to.
Good idea.
It's better than not if the board felt, I mean, at some point, I'm not sure what brought this, why it was important to do this.
Are we required to have a written and signed delegation of deposit authority?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Any of these, though, I, I was going to ask the board, things that I may have a question on, I will check with legal.
So I, I personally feel that if it's, if there's no reason for us to have it and it's already a state law, I don't feel there's any reason for us to have it unless legal tells us we need to.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I agree too.
You know, Michelle makes a couple of comments, but they don't really have anything to do with this delegation.
Yeah, it's more per process, not a policy and actual delegation, so.
But I understand.
Okay.
So if this is not legally required, shall we remove it or rescind it?
I think that would probably make sense, if you get a say.
Yeah, what, rescind or remove it?
Oh, rescind.
Rescind and same thing, okay, sure.
So why don't I bring that back to you next time, so you can make, when you're making motions on this?
Okay.
The next one is the statement of safety policy, and that's pretty, that's pretty boilerplate, and it has to do with the joint loss management committee. I guess it's fine, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with that.
I don't see anything particularly a problem in here, some of it does manage things or mentions things like, you know, workers comp and so on, and of course, the emergency management aspect of that, so, well, and, and other sorts of things with joint loss. Joint loss management is more than just a generic thing, though, or I should say at least it can be, and so then we get into the emergency management, which we actually have here with us right now, and, but joint loss management is also like risk and how you manage that, so there's, there's a lot more involved than just it says, hey, joint risk management.
Sure.
So I would, well, I don't see any specific problems with it, rather than us just immediately reaffirming it, I'd like to run it by the committees and the emergency management before we do that.
All right, I can do that.
And they can provide comments and suggest whether we should or not.
Joint loss won't be meeting until April 26th.
Okay.
Just so we know.
Yeah, and-
I mean, and I'm on that.
Oh, well, we'll know, we'll phone her. Yeah, and that also includes, as I scroll down further, that also has a discipline policy and stuff which- That's not really this, that's more the employee-
Yeah, see, I, I think there's some mixes.
Policy which we also have.
And again, the joint loss is also specified in state law.
Right.
So as far as the discipline and stuff like that, but you're getting away from the, of what you're trying to do.
So I think making sure that pieces are correct and in the correct places and that we're not duplicating efforts.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and send this to Rob for his opinion, and-
Sounds good.
Because he has nothing to do, I think.
Yeah.
Keep you out, we do our part to keep you out of trouble.
And then I'll also speak to the joint loss management.
You'll all be in trouble?
And, and I think that our chair of that is very knowledgeable about what he's doing, so. The next one is one of my favorites, disciplinary procedures for the police chief. You asked me to send it to Steve to have him take a look at, I did, and we both agreed that you should rescind that, that's, that's kind of not-
It's state law.
Yes, it's another state law that we don't really need to-
Oh, it's a state law, you're gonna behave it though?
It's a state law. Well, there's a method, if, if you want to get rid of Steve, what, you know.
Yeah, you, you have to do it this way.
Yeah.
That's right.
And there has to be reasons to do it, and this kind of says the same thing.
Okay.
The next one is the on-call policy for the police department. Again, I think this is more of an operational type of, type of thing, and not the select board micromanaging the police department.
Good idea.
And I don't mean that in a disrespectful way at all. Policy for the use of the police cruiser, you can use it for detainees, I thought that was good.
It makes it easier.
Go get your own rig for that.
That's what the trailer's for.
That's right.
I don't know if I talked to you about this, Steve, I don't really know what I'm talking about, I think it, it looks like it reads well, but again, that's part of your-
That's part of my, my operational.
Yeah.
And I have control over that.
Right.
So it doesn't make any sense. It makes no sense. And that was put in place because of one guy that is no longer here. Matter of fact, almost every one of them-
It's pretty, yeah, it's pretty obvious.
Yeah, almost all of those are that reason.
All, all of these are very obviously targeted at past issues.
What, do you think a policy was gonna solve all the problems?
Absolutely. Well, try to restrict it, but all they do is look in the law and that's what it said anyway.
Yeah.
Selling of properties policy, Russ reminded me that you had discussed this a little bit, and you wanted to add something in there about how the price of a property is calculated, as well as something like at the end, as justice warrants or prevails or something like that.
Yeah, the end is the, because it's got the, reserves the right to waive the circumstances warrant, but we also, we wanted to make sure that there was, with a motion and the reasoning recorded in minutes.
Right, okay. Utilization of town council services policy.
I didn't, I, I knew that we had a thing, I didn't realize it was an official policy. Let's see if that's what I've been told it was.
Is this something that-
I think it was an effort to keep the legal costs down, and I understand that and, and so forth, although you're not know it lately with all these property sales.
Follow somebody around and make sure they're following the policy, think, follow legal?
You know, but, and this board gave me permission to go up to $500 on items. And on top of that, I've also used the attorney law for these property sales, which, as you saw the bill last time, what that is doing to the bill. But you have to.
Right.
Yeah, no, you have, no, you have to.
Please.
You have to.
Don't get the town in a lot more trouble if you don't.
Right, you know, and I think that money that you spend, and I know this sounds silly, but you spend it on your town council and save yourself money at the end.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, and, and you've been doing it basically the way that we've suggested and requested, we gave you that kind of cap so that you can take care of stuff, and if it was gonna be something expensive, then we would still approve it, which seems to have been working okay.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
John teases me now when I call him, he go, okay, but this is gonna cost you X, because I'm always asking.
So do you think, do you think that we need to change anything in here, or, I mean, we're basically working under this already?
Yeah.
I'm, you know, I'm, I'm torn whether you really need it or not. And I, and I'm not saying you should really rescind it, but I think it might need to be rewritten slightly.
Well, yeah, just, just to make sure, I mean, sometimes we forget when things are running really smoothly, and then all of us might not be here.
Right.
Five years from now for some reason.
Well, there's, there's also-
Is there state law for that too?
Well, the one that I want to point out is section three for select board, one selectman may contact town council services with select board approval. So it's also a check on the select board, so one person on the board can't just run off and start asking legal stuff over and over about whatever they want to know, it has to be something that the board feels is appropriate. And, you know, those are the kinds of things that I think are important, and it says emergency situations supersede this policy, but, you know.
But I have to say, being the historian on the, the oldest person on this committee, that's happened before where certain selectmen would just forget the rest and, and that creates havoc, yeah, right? You mean just call town council? Oh, yeah, just do what they want, you know, just call and just count, it's all money without talking to anybody else, just do what they wanted, and then everybody, and then everybody's, oh, what?
The iron attitude.
Right. So that's, that's scary, you want, so. Well, I think that's what I'm thinking, in, in some kind of, just cap, that, you know. Or even, even an employee, I mean, I mean, oh, I'm gonna call town council, I mean, that'd be like-
Everywhere I've worked before, it's only the administrative that comes to town council.
That's what I don't, yeah.
Unless, I mean, if Russ might say to me, he's got something for the planning commission, and they have a little budget, that's fine, but you don't want everyone to be calling the town council.
Right, it's like if I have something going on at the fire, he takes care of it with-
That's right.
With that, and I-
Right. Because I'm sure there's lots of attorneys that just like, right, oh, yeah, I'll do this for you and this and you, and look at that.
Well, and it does that out fast.
That's a fact. So should, you're gonna clean this up a little bit?
I might just reword this a little bit and bring it back to you.
Maybe you should clean it up a little bit, yeah. So could you do that, please? Yes.
We'll see what I can do. I'm gonna probably attorney and get his word. You wanna use dog, a dog. There you go. Here's another one that I like, the work hour policy for the police department. It is the responsibility of the chief of police to schedule duty assignments to maximize coverage, isn't that what you do?
That's what we do.
Okay.
Well, here.
Believe me, I have one.
Yeah, right.
There, there's an interesting part, I mean, I'm just reading through the, the portions of this now, but in the second paragraph at the end, one high-ranking full-time officer or the chief should be available for calls at all times, including weekday, weekends and holidays. So that's different. Well, maybe not, because available for calls doesn't mean on shift.
Right.
So, so we do-
I don't, I don't think it's ever been, that somebody doesn't call and they don't answer the phone.
I called him the other day, but I was calling the wrong number.
That's because he missed you.
That's why I didn't answer, right.
No, Phil, so one of them always.
Which is a pretty big dedication, so thank you for that.
So they list the RSA there that says that it's the select board doing it under their authority from the RSA, but, man, I don't see that this really changes anything other than how he's using his budget, and he's gonna do this anyway, maybe at one, again, maybe at one point in time, a previous chief didn't, but-
I think exactly, I think that at one point there was some reason why-
Somebody was out of state all the time.
Yeah, exactly.
That was the reason why.
So I, I don't see a need to keep it, but at the same time, if it's not causing any problems, and, I don't know, it doesn't matter really to me either way, because we're doing it directly.
Well, I think you, it's, it's gotta be that way anyway, I mean, but-
It's that way anyway.
I guess I just don't see the point of the town having it, I mean, as a policy.
It seems like there should be a book of police policy that is not the town's, that something like this should be in.
And I'm sure Steve-
And there is, there is.
Is there a procedure in policy, so, and, and maybe we should, is that something that actually is affiliated with the town, or is it affiliated with the department?
It's our, it's our policy that somebody has to be on-call, either me or Phil, and it's usually one of the two of us, so if you can't get hold of one of us, the other one will answer the phone.
There are a lot of things that have been put in here that are really, well, the driveway policy and the site plan policy and all that, and it might be good to have a section with these types of department.
Yeah, I like, I'd like to see a, this is all the police policies thing.
Operations.
I don't, I don't want to be managing them, but we should have them all available and posted, so, just like we're finding policies that, I had originally been told, every policy's on our website, that's for us.
I know.
Oh, no.
No, they're not.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
There's a lot more of them, so it's good that we're finding these out and-
This is really a good, good exercise. The last one I had for you tonight was the purchasing policy. I have no issue with the purchasing policy.
Was, is that, was that updated from 2:50 to 1,000?
Yes.
Okay, no, I didn't know, I know we did that a couple of years ago.
We did it in December of 2018.
We didn't, that was, been that long?
December 17th, of course, you remember that.
We'd have to do that, because we would, we'd fill up the tanks with gas.
Oh, you mean for POs?
Yeah, for POs, right.
Yeah, before, every time you went to a gas station, you have to go to POs.
Absolutely.
Which it has, it has worked.
I was at the gas station today, someone pulled up and they got $2 worth of gas, I felt, I was there once, but-
Well, that was to get to the next pump.
My God.
Request maybe leave that select board if there's only one source. Received from the state or other joint bids, emergency or just to file special circumstance. Okay, specific items that don't.
I don't think you need that last statement of effective date either, but-
Which one?
The one that says it shall remain into effect until it's rescinded or amended by the current and/or future select boards, and I guess that goes without saying.
Radio. They just need one to fill up the paper.
Maybe.
Get some services cooperative. Department, it's keep inventory, property value- Department, it's keep inventory, property, valuations over the law for gas fee.
This is things you have, Steve, right, I mean, you know all this, yeah, you memorize it, yeah.
The inventory, the inventory property portion, just because I don't know the numbers, but let's make sure all those numbers are still the current accurate numbers. You know, like the 5,549.99, et cetera, for gas fee 34 that it's mentioning.
I gotta find where you left.
The last page of that policy. Inventory of property portion. So let's just make sure that those numbers are still all accurate.
Okay. Yeah, and that's something the auditors work with me on as well.
But, yeah, I think that's fine otherwise. Any other comments on it?
Nope.
Okay.
You don't want me in rules, I'm a columnist. This is not my forte.
Well, the good news is, is that you don't really have too many left, there are, there are some left. And the other items that we're gonna have to put some thought to is the operations.
The procedures manual.
Yeah, I can't, I lost that word, but anyway. And then other things that are here that really belong in a different category, in my opinion. Good to have it.
All right. So that moves us on to new business. Tax credits and exemptions.
So this is a relatively easy one, these are all the tax credits and applications that we've received, such as veteran exemptions. Before April 15th, they need to get approved by the board so I can put them in the system, I've already verified all the documents, so they just need to be signed off. They have one that's a little unusual, which is a current use application, because somebody's putting the wetlands on their property into current use. So that's what I have.
Putting wetlands on their property?
Yeah, they have.
Into current use.
Into current use, because wetlands can't be put in at any size. So it's less than the 10 acres required, because it's a wetland, and you can do that.
Oh, wow, I didn't know that.
They're not up there pumping water on it there, right?
Oh, I just need signatures, please.
Got that right.
Huh?
Got that right.
All rain for the weekend.
Get some signatures.
All, all right.
Talking of intro, we...
This is the only one I've ever seen.
I'll pull a water out of the ground, though.
I was doing that my first time signing my...
We were in snowboard.
It's the only one that I would ever find now. Slap again. And this way I can put these in, so they get in for next year.
And how many of the credits did you get of each type?
I think these are three veterans and one current use. Nope, actually, I think this one's a solar. So two, one solar, two veterans, and a current use, okay?
Okay, that's beautiful.
I love the top for you.
The proof I said on the solar one is Tom did the inspection for the solar array, so I thought that was good, and they had one.
Gee, that's nice.
I wanna go hang out with the other side of the club. I wanna go hang out with you.
Oh, okay, come on over.
I don't think you need me, I don't need you.
And then we can talk about the next one.
You're always needed, Steve. I don't know how we're gonna do it without you. You're just trying to get out of it.
Because the abatement application's pretty awesome.
You need me to get you anything during the day or anything? Have the guts?
Just close the bridge.
No, I can't close the bridge, tomorrow people won't be on the boat.
Just finally set a plate for the bridge, how's that?
No, I'm gonna, I'll go down in the morning, and I'll go put the signs up, and I'll head right to Congress.
Okay, so that's that one, and this one is...
That's the one.
Oh, the current use.
It's my first time ever seeing one.
See him all, okay. I'll recognize you.
Right, I remember seeing that.
How long you staying on there?
Oh, I'm not staying at all, I'm not gonna do that.
Meaning what, what?
That's nice.
Yeah. And I'm not a resident, so I have to, you know.
Well, that's true, ma'am.
I'm not a resident, but I'm still gonna be there.
Yeah, you better be. It's gotta be somebody to sit beside of.
Okay.
So we just sign this last, this one?
Can't get along with cops, so I'll sit with you.
We have to do a, we have to sign this law for a person.
No fighting there.
Yeah, we'll just taze them.
So does, on the veterans...
Have a safe trip home.
I know it's all checked off here on two, but do we need any of it on the...
No, just one's well. Some of those are for other exemptions, so it's really a universal form, that covers more than one type of exemption.
Yeah, because it says veterans exemption on here, too.
Well, there's two different ones, there's the all-veterans, and then there's the one that goes for handicap, and I think there's also one for an actual in-war veteran, gets a different amount.
Okay.
And the all-veteran one's the really easy one to apply for, which is why most people do it, as opposed to...
What is the easy one?
The all-veterans, all you have to do is show your discharge papers. And then prove you're a resident with the county.
Aren't there specific dates that they were a veteran?
No, that's only for the in-war one.
Okay, maybe that's one thing, huh?
Probably put your name in the ground.
Yeah, Matt and PJ, they were boiling today, I guess they're hot. Did you go over to Rogers this Saturday?
Uh, no, I didn't. It doesn't, it doesn't, yeah, my daughter-in-law, she was helping out, I was working. Do we have the abatement for her?
Want to do that?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that real quick, because that's an easy one. And then we also have an abatement for the campground, so this is one I had out earlier in the year where somebody got billed because their camper was registered, but it didn't get taken off the property value, well, I put it in the notes to have it be changed, but it didn't get changed before the December tax bill was thrown in. So they got a second filth, so we're just gonna do it again, okay?
You go, sir? Guys right on the ball, he's getting these guys.
Just cutting them, getting them, that's all it is for me.
All right, that moves us on to correspondence then.
I do have some correspondence, and I'd like Emmett to know on a couple of these. I received two emails from residents who would like us to pay Deer Meadow Road.
Oh, awesome. I'd like to do that, too. Where, where are we gonna start, where are we gonna start?
Well, according to these emails, from Concord Drive to the Webster Concord Line.
Awesome.
Oh, good.
Two billion dollars will take care of that.
Yep. But anyway, I did tell these people that I would bring it to the board, that they were, they had...
Tell them to come to town meeting, email them back, tell them to come Saturday, to come to town meeting, and...
Yeah, no, we had, when Deer Meadow was being done, there had been funds set aside for the two portions, and we did roughly half or so of it for the Pillbury Lake Village District Water System. But I believe there had actually been some funds set aside to go towards Concord, not the whole way, but towards Concord from the output there.
Right, that was my plan when we started, when COVID, the year that COVID started, I was gonna go from the clubhouse, as far as I could, to Cedar Mill Group. Around there where the ledge comes up through, and it's roughing the buckboard down through there. And then the Select Board didn't want me to do a project that year, because they weren't sure if they were gonna get their money from the taxpayers. We did end up that summer doing that 300 feet in front of Mr. S. Steps to help his drainage problem there. So we did do a little project, but we didn't, we're off a couple of years on the Deer Meadow Road project. And that was last year, I was gonna work on the Deer Meadow Road project, and then Concord Drive came along. And I wanted to complete one before I started the other, so that, that was my plan for this summer's project for the road construction project money, was to leave, to head down that way, but the traffic, it's just unreal. Like when we did the upper end of Deer Meadow, we shut that section off and detoured everybody around Centennial, and I'll tell you, you can just fly, you know? You still have to have somebody there watching, because bicycles and stuff don't pay attention to signs, because they're exempt. Cars will still try to go as far as they can, and so they can't go any further, but like last year, watching traffic, I mean, it was, it was two people. And then this year will be, and that, that cuts into a lot of loads of dirt, you know, but you gotta have, you gotta, gotta do it.
So it's safe to say that that is one of the projects for this, this year, then?
As much as I dread it, not because of the traffic, because you get started in the morning, and then you get a vein, and then you just, I just, I hate just sitting there waiting. It's only five minutes, but then you work five minutes, and then you dig.
Yeah.
But down through there, I think, I've been looking where that field is, some of that stuff, I might be able to make another, make it a little bit wider, and then dig that back out to keep the flow of traffic, so we can kind of a little whatever, so. I've been laying in bed at night, thinking about all that stuff, and then I'll take a peek at it, but I just know with the price of gravel that's gone up, and I have no idea what the tar is gonna cost this summer because of the oil, what that's gonna be per ton, so usually my $150,000 or whatever, I try to go 1,500 feet, so we'll just have to see what we do. Something's better than nothing.
Okay.
But that's awesome, but, yeah, no, I...
So am I hearing you say you'd like start in Deer Meadow Road, like from Concord Drive as far as you can go?
Well, no, it will be, well, it won't be any further than the Cedar Mill Group, it will be right in there wherever 1,500 feet comes.
That's what I thought you said, yeah.
I measured it last summer and had it all painted off, but I, yeah.
Yeah. The next thing I had was I got an email from Chris Shadler, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, asking the board to appoint someone as a member of the commission. Now, you remember, we updated the appointment procedure at a recent meeting, I did say to Chris that the person should come in and meet with you, but I was asked to ask you just the same. I, this is Joseph Palowski, who is a resident, you may know him. I don't know him well, but anyway, so I guess I'm asking for the board's advice, do you, shall I invite him to come to a subsequent meeting?
Oh, to put him on the conservation?
Put him on the conservation.
Oh, I thought you were talking about getting one of us on the conservation.
Well, only if you want to.
Is that something that we should, that should be kind of put out there, that there's a, there's an opening?
You know, I think so, I think that's what...
We kind of have, we've constantly been saying that, you know, every single board and committee and commission can, can use somebody.
Well, I, I guess I might, I don't disagree with you, I guess, but sometimes when you put it to somebody, like, hey, there's a opening, you know, because I don't know how many people are supposed to be on the Kongkong, but is there a limit, or is there a...
Yeah, there is a limit.
Yeah.
There is a limit.
Yes, I understand, you ask people to, but I think, I think sometimes when you put it to them, hey, there's a, there's a place that's open, it, it may just open people's eyes and ears, and it's like, oh, jeez, I'd really like, you know, it doesn't just get put to one person to decide who recommends.
This is the time of year that we go through and reappoint a lot of people whose terms are, are coming to an end. I usually call them and talk to them and ask if they wanna be reappointed. I think what would be nice, if we had on the website, this is, we have an opening in conservation, for example.
Yeah.
And so forth. What, what, I, what takes me back a little bit is that at the last meeting, the Conservation Commission unanimously nominated Mr. Palowski. Now, he's probably great, but that's not, that's not how it happens, in my opinion, you know?
So I, I will say that that's kind of the way that it has been happening for quite a while.
Yes.
Even before I was on staff, because I would show up and the, the board would nominate me and say, yes, and then they would usually provide paperwork to the Select Board and say, yes, this is the person we want. And, and most of that is inside the policy that we read and talked about, but that also has timing in the policy that we saw, and we haven't changed away from that, so we should try to follow the policy that we have now that we know about it.
So you're saying I should invite him to come to a meeting with the board?
Yeah, because it, it...
That'd be nice.
That, that's part of the policy, but so is the timing of it, because that was all supposed to be after the, the town meeting and so on, so it would be at this point. Because that was, that was in the policy. Which I thought we were, we were thinking about removing, and then said, no, we should, we should kind of keep that, because it's the boards that are getting elected, so.
I'm seeing this.
Unless I'm thinking of a different one, which is possible.
Well, no, you, you are, I see it now. I, I guess, I'm not sure if that's really saying, what happens if someone, if someone resigns in May, for example? And they have an opening? Do we wait till the, after the? I, I read this as being the people whose terms were expiring and after the...
I read it as people that were gonna be new, which may be for expired terms or not, but...
So I guess I just need in my head, what's, what is that?
Yeah, so I, do we need to, we have a policy to change it, or...
Well, maybe, since it seems to be, it seems we have a little confusion over, and I'm sorry, but I'm just...
Maybe we should look to make that clear.
Yeah.
But either way, it's gonna be like in that appropriate time period, if we invite them to come, come here and talk to us, and then we do it.
Well, and I also agree, I think what Marla was saying was that, that people have a chance to put their name in the ring, and if they'd like to be appointed. I think what's happened here is that people don't run fast enough, they get on a committee.
Well, we've always told people...
They don't take the right, they take the left.
And I'm just, I'm tongue in cheek, but, you know, a small town, you only have so many people that...
They have so many volunteers, that's right.
And, and we're lucky we have them.
Yes.
And we've always told people, if you're interested in being a part of the Conservation Commission or the Planning Board or whatever, talk to the people on it and the, the chairs of them, so...
And they've done that, so that's...
Which they've done, so, I, I don't want to, I don't want to hold them up, but I don't want to run afoul of our, of our policies now that we know that we have it.
Okay. I'll invite Mr. Palowski to come talk to the board.
That sounds good to me.
Thank you, those appeals are very late.
He does.
I do know the names, see, and I deliver newspapers all the time, I remember his name.
First house on the right.
That's right, thank you.
He got tons of concrete flying in.
Oh, is he? Oh, nice.
Yeah, I mean, he's nice. Local Officials Workshop 2022, and that's really, I think, Marla, did you go last year when you were new Select Person?
I did it online.
Oh, I guess that's probably, well...
Right, they didn't let me in.
Well, and they're doing it online again.
That could have been two reasons.
But I know.
Even before COVID, that was an online webinar.
Oh, okay.
It was really good.
I thought you were gonna say before COVID, they wouldn't let me in anyways.
Well, I'm just making you aware that they're held, holding that again. The, the next thing I have is a resignation letter from Judith Jones as Deputy Town Clerk. And that would be up to Michelle to bring forward a name to you.
Which, which has been an expect... Which, which has been an expected resignation.
Yes, it's nothing.
So this is not surprise or a...
They lure in a bracket and she says, wine in my ear.
We have a butter notice for you from the town of Pittsfield. They've, and again, this is for a telecommunications tower, 150 feet tall. And apparently they must think that you can see it from someplace in Webster.
I was waiting for you to say like they bought property over here.
You can, you can, you can see it.
From, from?
From over our way up the addies, you can look across and see all that.
Well, they have a...
Wow, really?
You have an opportunity to go weigh in on this next Thursday, the 10th. So, and tell them you're not really too crazy about looking at it.
I can, I can show you a spot that people don't believe me in town where you can see on the right day and the sun is right, you can see the windmills in Granton.
Really? Wow.
No, right over on Little Hill, right over in front of Honey G's.
Hey, listen, I was so surprised. I, when I was having some wood cut off my land behind my house on that cliff, they said, look, you can see Mount Kearsage. I was shocked. I could see Mount Kearsage from the valley that I lived in. So I was shocked. So, but boy, windmills, holy crow.
I'm pretty sure it's Granton. Yeah, that's where they are at.
I think they do have.
Broughton. They're in Broughton.
Broughton?
Broughton. Above Plymouth?
No, they're not the ones.
No, you're talking over Newport, Lepster, right?
Newport, Lepster, yeah.
Oh, Lemster.
Up on, what's his name's property? Come on.
Dana, lift that up.
What's his name?
That's the last page.
They sent back the...
Oh, is that the one I should have had?
Stop, I said they could see Mount Washington.
You can see Mount Washington from the farm. You can see Mount Washington if you come up by the farm and, and, um, come across the hand of Dustin Bridge. At the right time, you can see it, but out where Sue's has her horse.
Yeah.
Out over towards the stone wall, at the right, you can see, you can, on the right day, you can see Mount Washington from there. So they didn't lie to you.
No.
Well, don't tell the tax collector. You'll go up there more.
That's right.
If you're on the right day.
And there's mainly wrong ones.
But that was a, maybe I was napping and I was having some night math.
That's all I have for correspondence.
All right. That brings us to the next section then, public comment.
I, I have one thing that I forgot. The last all went along. And I think I talked to Dana and then we checked it with Wendy about the policy. But, um, the right thing to do is last fall, Chuck Rose Loggins and Hoptick and Forestry bought us some equipment for a fire truck, some lighting and some tools for battery-operated tools. And I know when we get a gift, just want you folks to, how did that, do you remember this Dana, how it went?
Yeah.
If, but it's just in courtesy to tell you folks so you can accept it, the gift, right?
Yeah, you should make the board aware that you've gotten this, this, whatever it was that they gave you.
So we can, you can accept the gift as town property, and then we can use it. We haven't used it yet because I haven't.
Do, for, for the fire department, do we need to do that? Because they have their own stuff for accepting donations.
No, if it was, if it was, if it was, the, the association is different than the fire department, but where this stuff is going on to the fire truck and not the association through the...
So this equipment will be owned by the town?
By the town.
Which is why it's with you.
And that's why I just wanted to go through the proper things and then, um, on that. The value is, I think, was between eight and $1,000 each. Um, we bought some...
Is there a letter we should say to say thank you?
I would, that's what I would say. Shouldn't we send a letter?
If you could let me know what that is, yeah.
Yeah, we can from that, but, um, the Milwaukee Tools and the portable lights and some stuff for car extracations.
Yeah, I remember you telling us about that. If you could get kind of like, I think we're supposed to have an approximate value when we accept something as a board?
Yeah, you just...
Yeah, I think it was around $800 a piece.
Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't need to be really accurate then?
Yeah, it was between...
Because I know there was discussion when we got a painting that like they couldn't accept it until they had it appraised or something like that.
Well, that was a whole long, yeah.
Well, no, that was only a few years ago. That was just before I was on the board.
I know, but I read the minutes from those and it was very confusing.
Yeah.
That was more subjective. This was actually bought by receipt, probably.
Yeah, that was a gift to the town years ago, the painting, and someone wanted to buy it.
Oh, it was that someone wanted to buy it?
And then they, right, and then they wanted to hang it on the wall, but then they wanted to see how much it was worth. So when they insured it through the town insurance, if I remember right, it was quite a...
Okay.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Do we still have the picture?
It's in the vault.
Yeah, that's what I said. So everybody can enjoy it.
I mean, I enjoy it every time I file.
Who's it, who's it a picture of? Is it... Edward Garrish.
Don't, you are a sweetheart. Well, you're getting yours. What a sweetheart. I don't know. I can't remember what the...
Ed Garrish.
Oh, Garrish, yeah, the old one.
He was a tax collector.
My mother-in-law has a painting upstairs. That's my mother-in-law. She, she donated to the town.
Did she?
Yeah.
That was nice.
Yeah, the one with the black, it's right at the black, the, right at the bridge, Closepin Bridge, looking up the river.
The potholes weren't there then, were they?
No.
No, there was a covered bridge there then.
No, no, that wasn't.
So is it all, so it's tools and lights? Is it, is it other equipment as well or just tools and lights?
Tools and lights and the batteries to operate them and the chargers, you know, it's the kits of...
Tools, but...
Yeah.
Okay. So I would move that we accept the donation to the fire department of the tools and lights and associated equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we're gonna like and thank you now.
Start using them.
Huh?
Yeah, you can start using them.
Yeah, no, no, we get, we just, we, um, we were gonna mount them on the trucks, and then Emery had a good idea to buy the, um, the bags. So when the sawzalls in there, the batteries in there with it, out of it, and then all the blades and everything are in there, so when you grab that to go up onto the second floor to do something, it, it's all in a kit.
You're not yelling that if somebody's throwing me up a blade?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got the kits.
No, really? You know, sometimes you don't think of that. Oh, I have that now, but if it's not all together, that doesn't work out so well.
We, we got the kits in the other day, and we're gonna get that stuff together, but, um...
Awesome.
I just, um, everybody's been, when's that going? I just says, not yet. Wait a minute. Because I hadn't followed through what I needed to follow through with and, um...
So you can tell me who I should send along?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
I will. We'll get together in the next...
That'll be good.
Great.
Few days.
I'll meet you at the bridge.
All right.
Oh, a good party out there.
Oh, you mean the bridge over here. Oh.
See, the bridge is gonna be closed tomorrow, so I can sit on it with my, with my window down and fish out the lower side.
That's right, you can fish.
Nice.
Boy.
I'd probably catch a sucker.
I'm gonna lynch in one of the other.
All right. Does anybody else have any comments at all?
No, we're still up, and that's good.
All right. So that moves us on to our motions and approvals, first of which is the minutes. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the non-publics were, those were sealed?
One was sealed and one, what have we got here? One of them was sealed.
We've got a public and a non-public.
Uh, session...
Two.
Two, from February 22nd, from 2/22/22, uh, was sealed. Session one was not.
Oh, we have to put special one on the agenda? It's just the on the agenda. We only list one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's my head.
It proves you're human. It makes me feel a lot better.
Well, I forgot to peruse the...
Did we, did we sign, I'm trying to think, did we sign this? Am I losing my mind or not the second non-public session that we sent away?
Yes, you did. Remember, I called you when you came up special.
I'm getting really bad.
This wasn't the one that you had to deliver?
Yeah.
No, Marla stopped in. She was the first to sign and...
Yeah, I guess I do remember that. Yeah, it's a long time ago. It's too much over the, water over the dam.
All right.
Under the bridge.
Under the bridge, yeah, really.
As long as it's not through the dam and over the bridge, we're, we're...
Yeah, really. I know my daughter will be floating down.
All right.
I guess. I wasn't here.
Do you have any questions or comments on them?
I don't think so.
I would move that we accept...
Did you find any spelling?
I didn't.
I had a friend look over them first.
Like I always point out, you'll never find Marla finding any spelling problems.
So I would move that we approve the draft meeting minutes as written for February 22nd and February 22nd non-public and February 22nd non-public session two sealed minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, that moves us on to the trustees.
I have nothing for the trustees this time.
Yay.
End of the year, you know?
Yay. And then signing of documents, which we've been kind of doing. Do we have further ones?
We do. We have the, the accounts payable manifest that I need signatures on and the payroll.
Oh, payroll.
Oh, so good. Then if they sign that, I can get my check tonight before I go home.
Yes, you can.
I think it's, uh, is it in your, it might be in your folder already. Awesome. Mine's in my bank account already.
I gotta pay, I gotta pay huckleberries in the morning so they bring me some more fuel.
I got boiled the other day. It cost me for one month $926.
What do you have, 90 degrees up at your house?
It was $5.07, I think, a gallon.
Ooh, oh, God. Well, start wearing the long johns and turn the heat down, right?
So I said tomorrow, here you go.
Between that and your light bill, you're not gonna have any grocery money.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Holy smoke.
The First National Bank is the credit card?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, what is image trend?
Image trend is from the fire department. That was that...
Oh, that's the new service?
Yes, the new thing, and I brought the bill up the other day for that Jake gave to me, and, um, they're working on getting that all in place.
Nice.
And the school district. That's why this one's so large.
I was impressed though. You can hang on to that one, not send it back.
Eventually they call you.
Oh, yeah, and we got, we got the insurance at the same time, too.
Good school board, uh, school district meeting, though. I was real impressed.
Good.
And, uh, yeah. It makes it nice when, yeah, somebody's trying to create...
To get something done.
Somebody's trying to create trouble and they ignored her. I liked that.
I, I was, I was happy that the, uh, school district meeting was as civil as it was after previous, uh, school board meetings had been far less civil from several of the same people that were in attendance.
Gee, yeah, you're being very nice.
All right. And do we have anything further?
I have nothing else.
All right. Last chance for anyone to say something.
Something?
All right. Look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow at the polls.
From, what's the time, Dave?
I believe it's...
10 to 7.
10 to 7.
10 to 7.
I thought it was 8.
We'll be here. You should come.
Well, we have to be here beforehand, I expect.
Yeah.
Oh, what time was this?
I'm reading the, uh...
What time do we have to be here? Yes, thank you. You're reading that good paper, boy.
6:30, 6:30.
Get out of here. I'm not being at 6:30.
That's what, that's what Mr. Jetty said. You guys had to be here at 6:30.
Did he not?
You want trouble.
Unless he calls you specifically, you're probably...
You wouldn't want him seeing me at 6:30.
No.
Definitely wouldn't want it.
I didn't shut, I didn't say we were leaving. I was gonna show up pretty.
I did good when I was working breakfast, when I used to work the breakfast shift. I did real good with that.
All right.
I liked it. I was gotta work by 10 every day.
We will see everybody for the vote on Tuesday, and then, of course, at town meeting, we look forward to seeing everybody as well. So I would make a motion that we close this meeting at 9:19.
Yay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful night.
Do I have a ride home?